I hereby call to order this meeting, I'm already getting tripped up and it's the first item, reminder that this meeting is being broadcast. Tonight's invocation will be given by Chief Chuck Wonder of Green Valley Fire District, and the pledge will be led by Devin Morales, a third grade student at Cop Review. So at this time, Chief? Sorry, I'd set the podium for our pledge leader. But I know you have that room.
Thank you very much. Please join me in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day, and thank you for the start of the rains. Thank you for this chance for us together here tonight, and thank you for these leaders that if you have called to lead this wonderful town we know as Sarita. Lord, tonight the council will be asked to vote on friends and neighbors who have voluntarily stepped up to take on leadership roles on this town council. I ask for your blessings on these individuals and your encouragement as they prepare for new leadership roles. Lord, I pray that you grant them the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May they speak out when it is time to speak out, and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May they always be guided by the Spirit of community, by the Spirit of justice, and by the Spirit of love. Last Lord, we say a special prayer for those killed and injured in today's Amtrak train crash in Missouri. Please heal those injured and bring comfort and peace to those who have lost loved ones in this accident. We pray these things in your son's most precious name. Amen.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Devin, please. Come on up. It's always good to listen to fire.
There you go.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Great job. Madam Clerk, we'll begin with a roll call.
Councilmember Bracco.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Yeah.
Councilmember Morales.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Egbert.
Here.
Mayor Murphy.
Here.
Quorum present.
Thanks. Tonight, we also have a proclamation. This time, I'll ask Chief Chuck Wonder to come up to the podium again, and I'll be presenting this proclamation to Angel Menendez for his good Samaritan efforts. If Mr. Menendez, if you'd draw me here as well. We're going to begin with a little video presentation, and then I'll enter into the proclamation.
Command, the 2151. Charlie. I've copied everything so far. I'll be establishing manual fire attack. Make a quick hit. Fire command, water on fire.
Fire copies, the 2151, we have command, 2301.
Fire command, fire.
Fire copies, fire out, 2002.
Hey, he's looking good. Why don't you take these two guys to catch a walk around, okay? Let's get, I'll look at all the sides of the building, make sure that this is the only thing we can.
Okay, if I set him up on the walk around and I can look what he did?
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
A hand for our fireman, first of all. You know, you hear a lot these days about if you see something, say something, and I think this is one of the finest examples of that. I remember the first time I actually saw the video on Facebook, I thought, oh, that's a cool decoration feature. And then I read into it, and I thought, oh no, it's not a decoration. But you could have been mistaken as one.
Yeah.
So I heard a couple, from a couple of residents, that they thought your, you know, your efforts obviously were, you know, noticeable, above and beyond. He's fine. This is your time, so family can run. And we wanted to do a proclamation to you on behalf of us as the town council. Whereas on the night of June 3rd, 2020, the Green Valley Fire District responded to a fire at Elysian Nails and Spas in Sarvarita. And whereas Good Samaritan, Angel Menendez, witnessed the fire inside Elysian Nails and Spa as he drove by and quickly alerted first responders. And whereas early notification by Mr. Menendez was key in preventing this fire from spreading and creating much more damage, saving Elysian Nails and Spa and neighboring businesses. And whereas Mr. Menendez showed the type of kindness and spirit that embodies the community of Sarvarita, making a lasting impact on the lives of these business owners. And whereas we, the citizens of the town of Sarvarita, Arizona, the Sarvarita Town Council, the Green Valley Fire District, and David and Nellie Tron, owners of Elysian Nails and Spa, extend a thank you to Mr. Menendez for his quick response and action. Now therefore, it be it resolved that I, Tom Murphy, the mayor of the town of Sarvarita, on behalf of the town council, call on the citizens of the town of Sarvarita to give thanks to Angel Menendez, in testimony whereof I have here on to set my hand and cause the fix the seal of the town of Sarvarita on this 27th day of June, 2022. Congratulations.
Thank you. Oh, no. As a small business owner, I understand, and when I was driving by, the only thing I thought of was if it was me, I'd want somebody to say something, so. But the heroes are these guys. They were, I checked the timestamps, it was under three minutes from when I called to they got there, so thank you. That's all.
Item number six is approve the agenda. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
So moved.
Second.
All, any discussion, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven is call to the public. At this time, any member of the public is invited to address the town council on any issue which is on tonight's consent agenda, or any issue which the town council can lawfully act upon at a future meeting. Pursuant to Arizona open meeting laws, the council may not discuss the items, but individual members of the council may respond to criticism made by those who addressed the council, may ask staff to review the matter, or may ask the matter replaced on a future agenda. I have a couple of speaker cards, but most of them are for another item. There's only one for this particular open call to the public, Mr. Noah Sundberg.
Hello, I'm Noah Sundberg. I'd like to talk about a recent article in the paper about you guys. And as you all know, I was not happy that you gave $195,000 plus six months to Dan as a parting golden handshake, even though he's still here. And I do appreciate all the work Dan's done, but I didn't like it. And then the article comes out that ties it to other accused behavior that was involved. And then we're in a lawsuit now because of the removal of the assistant manager. And all that behavior, I think, is avoidable with better management by the town council. And I don't think we should be giving money away, because we're going to, we gave away our $100,000 plus benefits. We're going to give money towards lawsuits. If we lose a lawsuit, we're going to be paying out that too. That is our money as town council, as town members, it needs to be managed properly, and you need a better job. You need to do a better job managing things that look dirty. And I'm not making comments about who's right or wrong on this thing, because you all look bad except for Mr. Shane, because he wasn't here. That's the town council, that's AC Marotti, that's Dan, and that's the assistant manager who's in the lawsuit with you. I want you guys to do better. I want you to manage your stuff better. I want you to, when you hire people, do a good job, see what their credentials, when you do your regular reviews every year, for them not to be puff reviews. I want you to do your job properly, to do the management that this town needs, so we don't have things that look corrupt, or at least mismanaged. I expect better, and I also expect responses. The paper asked for a response multiple times, you never gave it to them. To my understanding, you still haven't responded to them. You may be small walking information, but it's not appreciated. We want a transparent government that tells people what's going on, that can answer. I know there are certain restrictions to lawsuits, and any corrections that need to be made from the paper need to be made, because people like me who read the paper, and you are quiet, mute, numb, to it, tells me you're silent for a reason. So respond to people when accusations are made about you. Treat the town well, treat our government well. Do what we need to do to be well managed. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the only speaker card I had for a call to the public. Anybody else like to address the council? Seeing no movement, we'll clear the call public closed, and move on to council brief summary of current events. Mr. Bracco? No? Care? No? Debbie? Me? Oh my gosh. That's on to me. Well, I did hear, usually I'm attuned to new businesses coming in, but we were notified today, surprisingly so, that Planet Fitness will be opening a 21,000 square foot facility in the Old Bell's location next to Ashley Furniture. So that space has been open for quite some time. So it's my daughter's favorite workout location, although she lives in Phoenix, but when she comes down to visit, so I thought that was really good. I also attended a Park and Rec Commission meeting, and the preliminary results of our market survey came out, and probably no surprise to a lot of us, you know, some of the top three, that's the preliminary, they're going to still do some outreach, but I thought it went very well, and it was a lot of good results from that. Was that?
I just wanted to point out that, and the person, I was there at that meeting as well, and the study, the people that have done that, the company that did it, had Animex in their top 100 parks they had studied. And so it says that we are doing something good. They were amazed by how many components that one park has in that, in that area. So just wanted to point that out, that, well done, Parks and Rec.
Yep. And also the Arizona Transportation Bill, there's, it's a local group, they support the last number of years, there was a young man killed out of Vail in Kosovo a number of years ago, Robert Jones Jr. So the last four years, they've been raising supplies for deployed troops. I've been able to attend the last three years, and this year, the community as a whole raised over $10,000 to support the troops. We got to deliver it to the family support services, and they'll send it over to them. So that was nice. And also, I was able to play with the golf tournament with the police department for Walden Grove fundraiser for their football team. So that was nice to have one of our SROs, Big Al, and his son, it was Father's Day, actually, and the chief and myself. And I only golf about once a year, and they actually, it's a scramble, and they use my ball for replacement. So either I'm better than I thought, or they're worse than they think. So I'm not sure which one it is, but it was a very good time.
Mayor, that was one ball?
One ball, yes.
Okay, okay, okay.
And I didn't lose it. I played with the same one for 18 holes, which was miraculous. Yes, it did, it came back. It's rubber band, actually, not string. As a reminder, after this meeting, we'll break for July, and the first meeting, normal meeting in August, and we'll be back together August 22nd. I hope you all have a safe holiday summer season. The monsoons are here, so certainly be safe from there. And that's all I had. What's that?
Fourth of July.
Oh, and the 4th of July, yes. Fourth of July, I think it's going to be the biggest and best 4th of July celebration we've ever had, so I'm really excited about that, and look forward to hopefully everybody attending. And a new tradition, I don't know how many times we can call it new, maybe next year when we start, I won't call it new anymore, but Mr. Dilly had a really good idea on one of the meetings a month to really highlight and focus on our town employee accomplishments, as well as a lot of the things that are happening, which I guess officially, I should go to Madam Clerk if you want to read officially item nine, so we'll be on it.
Town managers' report highlighting employee and department accomplishments, capital improvement projects, development projects, and town events.
Thank you, Mr. Dilly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I appreciate this opportunity to report, to highlight the town manager's report for June. I also appreciate you putting a little extra focus on one of our signature events coming up, the 4th of July event for the town. It is, it's all set up to be quite the event for the community. I know that staff's really doing everything they can to promote it, get the word out, but there is a little information in the town manager's report about that, too. I know we have a full agenda ahead of us tonight, and so I'll just jump right in. Next slide, please. As is our practice, Mayor and Council, my report starts out by shining a bit of a spotlight on employees who are, who have experienced a work anniversary during the month of June. The brackets represented in the report are one to four years, five to nine years, 10 to 14 years, and the last bracket is 15-plus years. Next slide. In the first bracket, this, this month, which is one to four years, we're recognizing five employees tonight. Gregory Moreno in courts, Maria Castro in our police department, Liliana Soto in human resources. Next slide, please. And we've got two officers in our police department, Officer Javier Brito and Matthew Dixon. Next slide, please. In our next second bracket, five to nine years, we're recognizing three of our employees. Pictures are in front of you. We've got, excuse me, Ron, could you hit the minimize on that down there for me? Thank you. Three employees, we've got Beth Abramovich in the town manager's office, hired in 2017. We've got Leah Cox in our clerk's office, hired in 2015.
Leah Rhodes.
Leah Cox Rhodes.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. My bad. Sorry, Leah. And Cosme Signs in Public Works, he was hired in 2013. Thanks to the three of you guys for your service. And then our fourth bracket, or I'm sorry, our third bracket, we've got 10 to 14 years. We recognize one of our employees, a member of our leadership team, Anna Cassidy. She's our town's, the town's planning and building director. She was, came on board with the town in 2008, and is a great asset to the leadership team. Thank you, Anna, for all your service. I know she's with us virtually tonight.
Right.
Next slide, please. Our final bracket, 15-plus years, we had one employee celebrate his 15-year anniversary with the town this month, John Garcia. As with all who are recognized in this particular bracket, we extended an invitation to John to attend this meeting so that we can thank him personally. John is here tonight. John, where are you? There you are, John, thank you. It's good to see you. Usually I see him in a hat, so I didn't recognize him.
Right, and tall.
And he's tall. Let me take a moment and share with you a little bit about, about John. John was born in San Francisco in, in, well, I won't give the specific year. It's there? Is it there? Oh, good, okay. In the 60s, I'll put it that way. His mother is from West Virginia, and his father is from Lima, Peru. John graduated from San Francisco Lowell High School. John, is that mascot the Cardinal? Indians? It's now the Cardinals, according to Wikipedia. Anyway, John served our country in two military branches, the Army and the Air Force. His last duty station was at Davis-Monthan Air Force Base from June 2004 to June 2007, where he retired as a logistics officer with the rank of major. While at Davis-Monthan, John was deployed out of office to other states and countries about half of the time he was here. He and his family have lived in Sarvarita since July of 2004. John was hired by the town in June 2007 as an engineering aide in the Public Works Department for streets, and was later promoted to engineering technician. Next slide, please. John met and married his sweetheart, Avril, Avril? Is that how you pronounce it? Avril, thank you. While stationed in California on January 1st, 2023, Mayor and Council, the two of them will be celebrating their 25th wedding anniversary. They are parents to a blended family of five children, four boys and one girl. Ages range from 38 to 15. They are also proud grandparents of a 10-year-old beautiful daughter, granddaughter. John's favorite quote from, it comes from a T-shirt he wore as a young man. It goes, "To Be or Not to Be" by Shakespeare, "To Be is to Do" by Socrates, Socrates, "To Do is to Be" by Sartre, another philosopher, and "To Be," I'm sorry, "Do Be, Do Be, Do, Whatever, Do Be, Do Be, Do" by Sinatra. I totally butchered that, John, sorry, but that's a great T-shirt, by the way. Beth, our assistant town manager, who's had a pleasure of working with John over the many years, these past many years, had this to say about him. John is a hardworking and committed town employee. He has taken charge of and ran the town's Adopt a Road program. He's led the PAG Youth Art Program for many years. He's also an integral part of the flags that we now enjoy along Sarvarita Road during the holidays. He works closely with various scout troops in the, in the area, in the town, providing many Eagle Scout project opportunities and volunteer days for our scouts. So thank you, John. If you can join me in a round of applause for his service. John, just would like to invite you, if you wanted to say anything, the mic is yours for a couple of seconds, if you'd like.
I'll just go from here really quick to say, borrow, steal, hijack, modify a term that a previous, we thought previously said. Happy to be here, proud to civilly serve.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, Adam.
Can, can I add something?
Yes, absolutely.
For all of you guys that don't know John, all the beauty to our mediums, we need to thank him. I have seen him flip a U and stop in the middle of the street to take a water bottle out of the medium. So, thank you, John.
When, if I could just piggyback, I'm sorry, Shane. The Adopt a Road program, which myself and my church and many others present, and he's the most organized person, the gloves, the pickup sticks, and all the way around, and these are early morning hours that we only do quarterly, you know, he's probably out there every Saturday. And just one little correction, the Air Force is military, the Army supports the Air Force?
Got it.
And there, so I just wanted to correct that.
I'm neutral on all that. The Air Force is Army's Uber. We'll just allow a second for that to settle in.
Please continue.
Ron, next slide, please. Thank you. We'll now turn a few minutes over to our employee spotlight section of the report. Next slide, please. This is where we highlight employee accomplishments, whether it's educational, or professional, or career development type things, but in this report, we're recognizing two employees. Our first one is Paul Burton. Paul serves as the town's Public Works Traffic Signal Operations Manager. He was recently elected to be Vice President of the Arizona Section of the International Municipal Signal Association. The International Municipal Signal Association is one of two professional organizations contributing into the Federal Highway Administration to revise or develop highway standards concerning traffic signals and other control devices. This association also develops certification standards and training material for municipal fire alarm system technicians, public safety dispatchers, roadway signs, and markings technicians, and we'll learn a little bit more about that in the next, for the next, our next employee. But roadway lighting electricians, traffic signal technicians, and so on and so forth. So this association really weighs in a lot on, on how our roads function and look today, in today's standards. So thank you, Paul. Congratulations on that. Next slide. Sergio Bergo is our, our next spotlight employee. He's a Public Works Traffic Signal Technician. He attained two international certifications recently. One is the roadway lighting technician, Level 2, and traffic signal field certification, Level 2 as well. The roadway certification, the roadway lighting certification demonstrates an advanced level of knowledge and skill sets required for roadway lighting, design, installation, management, and maintenance. The traffic signal field certification indicates that the holder is well-rounded, has a well-rounded background in traffic signal technology and, from coursework or experience on traffic signal control systems troubleshooting. Sergio also recently attained a Level 1 certification from this, this international association for signs and pavement markings, and we wanted to recognize him as well tonight. So thank you, Paul and Sergio, for your accomplishments. Next slide, please. As is usual, the, the case in these reports, Mayor and Council, this department highlight section of the report is really packed with a lot of great updates from, from your leadership team and your departments. Way too much information to share in our, in my, in, as I cover the report in a few minutes that I have with you tonight, so I hope that you all have a chance to get into that report and read it in a little closer detail. Next slide, please. At a 30,000-foot level, though, I'd like to, the updates in this section cover continued work on our building here at Town Hall. You know, there was a significant investment by the public to create this facility for the community. And so the work that we've been undertaking, whether it's internal to the, the paint here or external, some, some facade work, we've also been doing some roof repair work, very important. We've had some leaks, and the, the roof membrane was showing signs of deterioration over all these years. So we've got half of the roof done this year, and we'll program to do the other half next year. But all of that is in place to protect this investment for the public, so that it serves the community well in the years to come. Additionally, in the report, we're covering new areas that the PAG Youth Art Program will be targeting to beautify and enhance our community. In addition to that, we're, we're spotlighting some new employees in our planning and building department, so take a look at those, the employees, we're happy to have them on board. Couple of them are internal hires, so folks that are, have expressed a desire to enhance their career development and move into a different area, so that's exciting. A couple of special accommodations in our police department for great work performed by staff, so make note of that. Very tender story in there about our, one of our SRO officers and the help that they, he provided to a graduating senior. So great, great job there. Next slide, please. The department highlights are, continue by sharing some updates on projects meant to enhance the quality of life for our residents and communities, such as the remedial, the remedial efforts at Freeport-McMoran on parcel 30. That work is started, if you haven't driven down La Canada, I'm sorry, La Valida, you know, that work is underway, and we're excited to see that progress. The completion of the National Fitness Court at Animex. Let's not forget how, how wonderful that park is, and this, this new amenity is going to serve the public for years to come. We're still waiting for some wrapping, but, but the system, the stations are there, they're functional, and, and it's going to be a great amenity for us. And then, I know that this is an odd add to that list of projects, but we've got the EGs, and there's a nice update there, and they've been using our facility here for hiring and interviewing, and they're really excited to get opened up, and that'll be a great thing for our community as well. There are also several updates on staff activities coming from our police department, economic development and public affairs department, and our Parks and Rec Department on, on good work from, from a staff's perspective. So I really hope that you enjoy these updates. Next slide. Hearing the clear message from council and the leadership team, when I came on board with, with the town, we really needed to up our game from a recruitment perspective. We immediately have embarked on an initiative to create a new recruitment video that we want to debut with you tonight. The video introduces who we are as an organization to the world. We have such a great story to tell, and this video is, is a big help in communicating that to everybody. I'm happy to report that the employee recruitment video project is, is now complete. The video was developed by Dustin Sinclair and, and our communication specialist in public affairs, along with staff support and participation, you'll soon see this. Contained in the report is a hyperlink that will take the reader to the, to the video itself on YouTube. During the course of making this video, we stumbled upon a natural tag phrase that we would like to use and build an entire marketing campaign around going forward. That tag phrase is "Be Sarvarita." The video will be used as a promotional tool for job recruitment, which we hope will enhance our efforts going forward, and net greater successes in the, for the organization in our, in our efforts to tell the world. in our efforts to tell the world who we are as an employer. Those involved in creating this video had a lot of fun doing so, and I hope you enjoy it. Please play.
Hi, I'm Michael.
And I'm Ricky.
So, I heard you want to work for the town of Saurita.
Come on, we'll show you around. While Leah's plans grow in place, our employees are growing in place as well. On top of her promotions, Leah has received numerous Clerks in Election Certifications, five to be exact. Our organization supports your growth.
Aside from our competitive walk-in challenge, the town has taken steps to make salaries more competitive, to not only attract, but retain our great team. Market adjustments, merit increases, and cost of living are just a few ways we try to stay ahead. That guy Jorge, he walked over a million steps in a month.
Jessica works hard to keep our employee benefits and needs front and center. Working for the town, you can expect medical, dental, vision, life insurance, and our Arizona State Retirement System Plan for those golden years. We also have a flexible spending account benefit that provides for uncovered expenses.
In Saurita, we strive for organizational excellence, of which many of our departments have been recognized by their peers, like our Finance Department, which has won the Distinguished Budget Award 16 years running. That's why they call your team "The Goat," right, AC?
That's right, Michael.
Our organization is a people-first organization. What's important to you is important to us. So, whether you need to attend your kid's dance recital, soccer game, or doctor's appointment, we understand that family time is part of life, and we support that. And pets, too.
We each have a vital role. Whether you maintain facilities, issue permits, or address a resident's needs, you are out front, leading the way.
Hey, that's right, Michael. Leadership can come from anywhere in the organization. And here, with Team Saurita, it often does.
That's why I appreciate working here. Where else would you have the opportunity to participate in leadership meetings and shape a community's future? We take pride that an overwhelming majority of our residents rate our town services positively.
Eighty percent to be exact.
It's all about our service-first culture, Mayor Murphy.
That's right. Working for the town of Saurita is about serving others and meeting the needs of our community. So, come be part of the Saurita team. Be Saurita!
Any comments on the video?
It was fantastic.
Well, you're biased.
Well, not the end part, the rest of it. And actually, the theme "Be Saurita" will be the theme for our State of the Town, which we'll be having in September. So, blend that in.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Appreciate all the staff participation. It was a lot of fun putting it together. Next slide, please. And I know that we saw this debut in our budget retreat in May, but here publicly, we thought it'd be a good idea to put this out for the public. It's our new town organizational chart. As staff, we're pretty proud of the kind of organization this image represents, one of supportive teamwork and collaboration. We're excited to make more use of this. You'll find this now occupies real estate, wall real estate in a lot of the locations here in Town Hall and our various departments. So, we're really fortunate to have it and grateful for those visionary minds that were behind the effort. Thank you. Next slide, please. Now, before moving on to capital projects, I will note this month's Town Managers Report also includes updates on several active commercial developments and land use projects that we won't cover here, but it's in the report. Please, next slide, Ron. Highlighted in our report, this month is an update on the Quell Crossing Extension Phase 2 Capital Improvement Project. The project is approximately 50% complete at this point. Ashton Construction is now working primarily on the low-flow bridge cross as it crosses the Santa Cruz River. The rebar crew is installing reinforced steel for the first layer of the rebar mat on the bridge deck. Work is continuing at the intersection now for the new traffic signals. The contractor, Mountain Power, should be putting up the new traffic signal poles by the end of this month. So, we're excited to see progress happening there as well. Next slide. Happy to answer any questions that you might have about this month's report.
Oh, thank you. It's great. Appreciate it very much. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will say, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate these updates. It's nice to see the employees and to see what they're doing and how they are excelling in their work realm. So, thank you.
And one of the things I learned tonight, I know we had different grading structures for wastewater, because that's been presented to us from many. I didn't know we had all these different levels for streets and signalization and accreditation. So, those are the small kinds of things that's interesting to learn over time. So, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Item number 10 is the Consent Agenda. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Any opposed? Consent Agenda is approved. Madam Clerk, item number 11, please.
Saurita Teen Advisory Council, STACK, end of year report.
Thank you. And Ms. Hester, Laura Hester, our Park and Rec and Community Service Director, will introduce the STACK members, and STACK members will present and lead the discussion.
You're looking great, Laura.
Yes. And I was, the whole time, I'm like, looking around, and there's a lot of people here. So, I'm like, maybe Laura's here. I don't know. I didn't see her.
Laura's out today. So, I'm filling in for her, but it ends up working out. I've had an absolute pleasure to work with STACK, our Sarita Teen Advisory Council, for this year, year '21 through '22. They did an incredible amount of work this year. And I feel like personally, being able to get involved in this year, we got to see a lot of cohesion with the group and bringing them back into the fold in Parks and Rec. So, I'm not going to steal their thunder. They have a beautiful presentation they put together for you. We have four members of the council here that I'd like to invite up at this time to introduce themselves and get rolling on this presentation.
Thanks. And I've always enjoyed, at the annual league meeting, which will be in August, various communities have a group like STACK, and I've always been proud to be able to see their presentation, have lunch with them. They get to tell me, you know, what businesses they want here, what restaurants. I've still yet to complete some of those, but it's been a good group for a very long time. Thank you.
For this last year, I am Mia Carlson. I was the Vice President of STACK.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Will, and I was the Secretary.
Hi, I'm Parker Boring, and I was a representative.
I'm Erica Arrington, and I was the historian.
So, I'll start with talking about... I want to start off by talking about what Sarita Teen Advisory Council is, because I'm sure many of you have not heard about it, but we're trying to, you know, rectify that. We're basically an organization under, kind of under the town, that we are, we create and plan and decide all the details of events so that we can include teens in Sarita. We learn a whole bunch of different skills that prepare us for futures in pretty much anything. But, yeah, we learn some really cool things, and we're giving a lot of opportunities to help out in the community, and not just in our own events, but in town events. Our first event of the year was the Teen Summer Splash Event, where we learned the basics of planning an event and how to successfully run an event. And there were 11 participants, where we enjoyed snacks. There was a slip and slide, water balloon target practice, balloon volleyball, and relay races for prizes. And then, here are some of the pictures from the event.
The next thing we did was the League of Arizona Cities and Town Youth Day, which was a little leadership training. And the LACT is a municipal league that connects over 90 cities and towns in Arizona. Their goal is to promote local government, local self-government, and representing the cities and towns of Arizona to legislators. Teens from all of Arizona met together to receive training on leadership skills such as public speaking. The participating teens also had the opportunity to meet and talk with other youth organization members from Arizona.
And here are some pictures. Okay, our next one was Teen Sports Day, or whatever. It was an event, and the purpose of it was to help other teens learn and exhibit teamwork and good sportsmanship. Teens played a variety of sports, including kickball, soccer, volleyball, and basketball. At the conclusion of the event, the teens were able to turn to a raffle to win a sports equipment duffel bag. And here are some pictures of the event.
We were also given the opportunity to volunteer for the Spooktacular, which is one of the town events, not created by us, but aided. I would think so. We were able to decorate the underpass under the road over here, and we were gonna, we helped as an activity station, which was really fun. So, yeah.
The next event we participated in was the Winter Fest Parade, where we had a float to represent STACK. And also, we were privileged to have some of the town council members on our float. We discussed and decided on every aspect and decoration of our floats, and as well as the logistics behind each detail. Our float and the theme, the theme of our float was "A White Christmas", was chosen to be a float on which a few of the town council members would ride upon. The scavenger hunt that we ran was also a very successful part of the evening. Winter Fest attendees would walk around the town council center and find clues through QR codes to win a prize at the last location. And then, here are some pictures from the event.
Another event we did was the Game Night, where we had a bunch of, it was an interactive gaming experience with options for teens to play Nintendo, various card and board games, table tennis, and a bunch of oversized games. It was the most successful STACK planned event of the year, garnering 25 participants. The participants were also given an opportunity to win gift cards through Uno, Jenga, and Super Smash Bros. competitions. And here are some pictures for that.
Okay, so, and then, we ended up having a memorial event for all the teens who have passed previous years. And we were able to plant a memorial tree in memory of all of them. And we had a few STACK members and the mayor give a speech at it. And the Tanner Bell Carr Foundation represented as well with scholarship applications for seniors and to honor a lost teen of their own for whom the foundation is named.
Another thing we got to participate in was Fiesta Sarita. We partnered with Suaro Solo, or Solar, to help make a booth, and what we decided on was a dunk tank. And it was very, it was very fun. We had, the mayor was able to be in our dunk tank, and a whole bunch of stackers and different volunteers.
Our next event that we planned was the Picnic in Art Event. This event featured chalk art, many snacks, lawn games, opportunities for winning prizes, and we also had a Hennett artist come in. The attendees could rotate through different options to experience the full enjoyment of each detail. They were also invited to take a 2020 to 2023 STACK application. And then, here's some pictures and all the artwork that was created.
Thank you for viewing our presentation of the year in review, STACK 2020.
We're super excited for this upcoming year, and we've had so much fun. And we want to thank everyone that helped participate, even when they weren't able to, you know, be in the council, because they're not a teenager. But it was very helpful for the people to not only support us, but to help us learn all of these different skills.
I'd like to correct one point. I stopped growing mentally at 15, so...
Right. On there. Thank you. How are the applications going? What type of number will you, you think you'll end up with next year in this participation?
So, we settled on 18 STACK members for next year.
Great.
We had nine applications. 18 were filled. I think we're going to have a fantastic group this next year. A few of these, these kids are returning as well. And I would like to also just thank one of our recreation leads, Ellie McGee. She wasn't able to be here tonight with another job up in Oro, but she was absolutely integral to our organization with our relationship with STACK. And she's really become a kind of a leader for these youngins here. So, just wanted to give a shout out to her. And if there's any questions for STACK?
No, just one comment, a bone to pick with Parker. When I did the dunk tank, nobody told me there was a built-in step to get back on, once I've gone in there, until afterwards. So, I see Parker bounding up on top of the seat, and I'm thinking, "Oh, that would have been good to know," as I'm wrestling myself. I'm not like Mickey Marimontes out here in the audience, you know, struggling to get myself out. So, we'll have to work out for next year. But I imagine that they're everywhere. But, no, it was fun. Yes, sir.
I do have a question for this very talented group, if I could. So, a lot of activities, a lot of events. Obviously, you should be certainly proud of the effort. I've heard a lot about you as a newcomer to this organization. Look forward to being able to work with you. So, I'm just curious, all these events that you've now had experience scheduling and administering, is there any, are there any lessons learned? What are some takeaways that you have in terms of the effort? What would you do different in terms of making that better, better participation, feeling better about the activity? Any thoughts along those lines?
I'll go. I think we definitely, we definitely learned so much over the course. If you sat in on the planning meetings in July versus like last month, it was crazy different. We learned so many things on how to communicate with vendors, how to, what details needed to be planned, and how specifically we could draw in teens and what they would enjoy. Something we're hoping to work better this year, which is kind of like an overall thing, is advertisements. We established our social media platform, but it's still kind of new. So, we are still figuring out that and different methods of advertising, but that's going to be our probably biggest takeaway from this year.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, good question.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think that was pretty clear what she said, but I wanted to make sure that everybody understands. It's not town staff that are organizing and planning and running these events. I've had two daughters that have been on STACK, and they are literally, they decide on what activity they're going to run, and they do it. And they just ask staff for help. So, it is an incredible experience these youths have in learning leadership skills, learning organizational skills, learning how to speak to adults and to communicate and everything. It's, it is spectacular. And every time, every group that comes up, I'm always impressed with everything that you've done. So, nice job.
Thank you. And are you planning on going to the league again this year?
Yes, we are. And this will be the presentation they take with them.
Great. Thanks. Appreciate it. Thanks for being here. Thanks for all you do to the community.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, we move on to item number 12. If you could read that out, please.
Public hearing, discussion, and possible action regarding an appeal that has been filed challenging the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval of a Type 1 Conditional Use Permit for Liberty Youth Academy, a private school to be located in the GR1 Rural Residential Zone. Case number SA6220002.
Thank you. And Anna Cassidy, who you heard in the Town Managers Report from the Planning and Building Director, is the Planning and Building Director. Will present this item, lead it virtually. And after her presentation, we can ask questions of staff, if you would like. And then, we will hear from the appellant, the applicant, to speak. And then, well, it does require a public hearing. So, after that, we'll open up the public hearing and proceed from there. And Mr. Dilly, do you want to start anything off, or just go right to Anna?
Mayor, I think you outlined the order. We will hear from staff, and then we'll hear from the appellant, and then we'll hear from the applicant.
Great. Thank you. Anna, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
We can. Please proceed. You might want to just talk up just a smidge, if you can, but if not, I think most of us can hear you.
Great. I will do my best to speak up. I do have a scratchy voice, which is part of the reason why I'm at home tonight, to keep all my own germs to myself.
Well, we thank you for that.
So, we had a proposal for a private school for up to 140 students in a GR1 zone. A private school in a GR1 zone requires a Type 1 Conditional Use Permit A private school in a GR-1 zone requires a Type 1 conditional use permit process. For those of you not familiar with these, a conditional use is a use that might be appropriate on a given site with or without additional conditions of approval. An application was filed for a Type 1 CUP on February 28th by Liberty Youth Academy. Per STC 18.97.030, a Type 1 CUP is a Planning and Building Director decision. The site is made up of four parcels. There are three 10-acre parcels, and there's also an access parcel. The two western parcels are owned by Liberty Youth Academy. The eastern parcel and the access parcel are owned by the applicant personally. Here you can see an image of the parcels. I'm going to get a highlighter up here, and I'll point a few things out. On the right-hand side of the slide, we have La Cañada. On the north, we have El Toro. So, the bulk of the site is located south and west of El Toro and La Cañada. There's a single point of access along a narrow privately-owned parcel that goes out to La Cañada, just south of the railroad. This is a photo of the site entrance. Here we are looking to the west from La Cañada. This is a photo of the access parcel looking east, towards La Cañada. This is a photo showing a limited view of the school site itself. You can see there is some natural vegetation out there. Here you can see the site plan that was submitted along with the conditional use application. The main purpose of this slide is to show you the context and where the school is going to be located on the large site. This cluster of lines that you can see that I'm circling is where the school itself will be located. The property boundary, I'm outlining it for you here. Cross, and then up, and then you have your access parcel across the top. This is a more zoomed-in view, giving you a better idea of what the school development itself will look like. We've got two classroom buildings, an admin building, some parking areas, a basketball court, and a baseball field. A CUP approval by the director requires that seven findings be made. In making the decision on this Type 1 CUP, the director is looking for compliance with the objectives of the general plan, conformance with zoning regulations, no adverse impact to adjacent property or surrounding neighborhood, or that the impacts can be mitigated through conditions, adequate and efficient vehicular and pedestrian access, circulation, and parking can be provided. The site is adequately and efficiently served by public and utility services. It meets the standards for noise, smoke, glare, dust, et cetera, and hours of operation are not detrimental to adjoining residents. In my analysis of the request, I found that two of the seven findings were not met. Finding C, adverse impacts to adjacent properties or surrounding neighborhood. Based on my analysis, I determined that the number of average daily vehicular trips to the site could be disruptive to the neighbors. The accepted number for a private kickball school is 2.48 daily trips per student. Multiplied by 140 students yields 348 daily trips. The school will not have bus service. I'd also like to note that the daily trips, one drop-off equals two trips. So, one drive in is one trip, and then the drive back out is a second trip. Finding D I found was not met. I found a lack of adequate and efficient vehicular and pedestrian access, circulation, and parking. And that is because the access parcel that I showed you that goes out to La Cañada is very narrow and has several constraints. So, it really allows only for the minimum 20-foot required vehicular access and is not wide enough to provide pedestrian or bicycle access through that parcel. There was also some neighborhood opposition to the request. Based on this, the conditional use permit was denied by the director on March 23rd. The school filed an appeal on April 7th. The procedure for appeals is spelled out in STC 18.97.030. An appeal of the director's decision is to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and an appeal of the commission's decision is to town council. It's important to note that the commission and the council do not have to make the same seven findings for approval that the director has to make during the director process. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to hear the appeal on May 2nd. Public notice was provided as required. We had two neighbors who spoke in opposition to the school, and one neighbor who spoke in support. We also had several residents who are connected with the school who spoke in support of the project. This map shows the feedback that we received prior to and during the commission public hearing process. The green circles are neighbors who supported the project. The red circles are opposition. And the purple circle was a supportive neighbor, but we could not verify that they were the property owner in that case. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted to approve the conditional use permit with conditions. The conditions are listed here. And Lisa Cole has kindly offered to read these aloud so that I can give my voice a little break. So, I'll let Lisa take it away right now.
Thank you, Anna. One, the applicant must notify all property owners who currently access their properties from the access parcel of any change to the status of their access. Two, outdoor amplification of sound shall not be permitted. Three, outdoor playing field court lighting shall not be permitted. Four, minimum setback for structures, parking, play areas, and other ancillary uses shall be 100 feet from the northern property line. Five, enrollment shall be limited to 140 students. Six, 15 miles per hour speed limit sign shall be posted along the access parcel. Seven, hidden driveway sign shall be posted for any property owner along the access parcel who requests such signage. Eight, the applicant shall attempt to have the utility pole located near the east end of the access parcel, either relocated or removed. Nine, all fire code requirements must be met. Ten, the applicant shall either, A, provide any walkway required by the zoning code onsite or via an easement, or B, apply to the Board of Adjustment for a variance to have the requirement waived. Eleven, the applicant has the responsibility to verify that all Union Pacific Railroad requirements are met.
Thank you, Lisa. Following the commission's approval, an appeal was filed by opposed neighbors on May 31st. The appeal request was signed by six affected property owners at three separate addresses. The basis of the appeal was twofold. That the UPRR easement that runs through that access parcel may have some conflicts with the project. It's unclear who has control of the easement and whether UPRR will allow the project to happen in such close proximity to the rail line. Secondly, the opponents are concerned that buildings have already been located on the site without the approved zoning or development plan. Public notice for this appeal was provided as required. The sign on the site mailed notice within a 600-foot radius, and there is an advertisement in the Green Valley News. Public comments received are detailed in the staff report. We received opposition from the appellants, and we had a few other comments that were more just questions. They were not clearly supportive or opposed. Tonight, the town council is required to hold a public hearing to determine whether to uphold or reverse the approval, to approve or deny the CUP. If the council votes to uphold the commission's approval, the CUP is approved. If the council votes to reverse the approval, the CUP is denied. Staff's recommendation is council's pleasure. The next steps for tonight are the appellant will present, the applicant for the school will present, the public hearing will be held, the town council will have an opportunity to deliberate and to make a decision. Following tonight's decision, there's a 30-day appeal period. The appeal at this point would be to the Superior Court. If the CUP is approved, the school will follow the normal development review process. There are two suggested motions up on the screen for you. The first motion would uphold the planning commission's approval. I want to point out that the way the motion is written, it keeps the same 11 conditions that Lisa read out loud. However, the council can choose to add to those conditions, to remove the conditions, or make some changes. That's up to the council to decide that. The second motion would reverse the commission's decision and would subsequently deny the CUP for Liberty Youth Academy. This concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Anna. Does anybody have any questions for Anna? We can always obviously ask questions throughout the night, but the next two pieces would be the appellant first, the applicant second, and then open up the public hearing. Does anybody have any questions or comments at this time? Bill? No? Okay. At this point, we'll be moving to the appellant to come forward and make their presentation, as they would like to. Do we know, please, please come forward. Depending on the height, it's that top button on the bottom right-hand side.
It's been a while, but I'll figure it out.
Bottom right, there you go.
Right here.
It's a little toggle switch.
Is the mic hot?
It is.
I can change my own slides? Yeah?
So much power, Brian.
All right. All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, executive management. I'm here today as one of the appellate, signatures of the appellate process for the conditional use permit for Liberty Youth Academy. The brief history, Anna went over a bit of it. But Liberty Youth Academy purchased the said property in February of '22. The academy went before the P&amp;Z Commission for a conditional use permit. Conditional use permit was granted by the commission May 2nd. Surrounding homeowners filed an appeal against the conditional use permit decision on June 1st. And both Liberty Youth Access and Union Pacific Right-of-Way overlap each other, creating a conflict, a major conflict. Legal control and ownership of this access easement has yet to be determined. Commission stipulated the owner is responsible for contacting Union Pacific for the required approvals before the development plan will be approved. And Union Pacific was notified and has contacted the Planning and Zoning Director. The academy went to the Board of Adjustment seeking a variance to remove the code requirement for pedestrian access along the access easement. The board tabled the request until ownership decision rights are determined pertaining to the access easement, Union Pacific Right-of-Way. Without an approved development plan with Union Pacific approval, permits, and clearances, Liberty Youth Academy has violated Town of Sarita building code twice. Number one, the delivery of the first building onto the property May 25th with no permits. And number two, delivery of a second building, June 13th, again, with no permits or approved development plan. Liberty Youth Academy continues to apply for variances without verifying... How do I get rid of, can we move her up?
There we go.
Without verifying control and the ownership of the easement, Union Pacific Right-of-Way. Where is the code enforcement? I ask you this tonight. Why has nothing been done to stop this? Again, there's a site map that you saw from the director here earlier. So, first of all, let's talk about the access. Here you have a western view on the left and an eastern view of this easement on the right. Notice the width. Notice the proximity to the railroad tracks. Here's a view to the east with two vehicles side by side. The access easement is 20 foot wide, and the Union Pacific Right-of-Way is 50, which is 25 feet to the north from the center of the tracks and 25 feet to the south. They both overlap. Major conflict. Here you can see how the railroad tracks go between the two easements that are outlined here. It's kind of cattywampus through there, and it protrudes over both. Here's a view of the two vehicles looking west. Note the proximity to the railroad tracks of the vehicle on the left, or on the right, I'm sorry. So, try to put pedestrian access in there. It's not possible. The apron on La Cañada is offset, making it very difficult to make a southbound right turn onto the easement without jumping the curb. As you can see, the yellow arrow on the right, it's only six feet away from the railroad track. And the access isn't just for private vehicles. There's other folks that live up there and use that to access their homes. They have garbage collection, and who knows what other else they do from time to time? Contractors, maybe one of them get a pool built, who knows? Now, note the overhang of the train car over the rail. As you'll notice by the yellow arrow indication there, it hangs over. It hangs over two and a half to three feet beyond the track rail. There's a measuring tape, two and a half feet. Look at how close it is to that truck. Add a moving train into this mix. How do I play the video on here? So, note the amount of space between the truck and the track rail, once again. And imagine that moving train overhanging that rail by two and a half feet. Be right into that gentleman next to that truck. If not the truck. Add a second vehicle, and you're up against a train. Parallel streets are prohibited within Union Pacific Right-of-Way per 7.1 of the Union Pacific Railroad Public Projects Manual. Here's a cover of it. 7.1 overview states, "In the interest of public safety, parallel public roads shall be located off Union Pacific Right-of-Way. Commercial properties adjacent to the railroad property must consider the impacts to the railroad crossings during development and construction." railroad crossings during development and construction." 7.2 General Guidelines. Access to Union Pacific equipment, railroad property, structures, and track cannot be restricted or prevented. 7.3 Key Considerations. Parallel roads need to be located off railroad right-of-way. Encroachments are not allowed without an approved lease agreement. Parallel unity construction work that might impact the railroad must be reviewed and approved by the railroad. Let's talk a little bit about the intersection. The alignment of El Toro Road at Lockanyata Drive is another serious issue to be considered. Note all the different connections, and any of you that have lived here for some time would be familiar with that. In late July of 2003, the town's first Parks and Recreation Director, Kristy Byrd, and Recreation Coordinator, Gibson Piccholi, were in a serious vehicle accident at the Lockanyata-El Toro intersection. Kristy suffered severe brain damage and is confined to a wheelchair for the rest of her Here's the article out of the Green Valley Archives, Green Valley Newspaper Archives. This was my supervisor. I was employed here when this took place. Some of you may remember it. Mr. Hockley, I'm sure you do. Lawsuits were brought against the town regarding this traffic, tragic traffic accident. Our tax dollars were used to pay liabilities to the plaintiffs for their injuries. These were town employees. How many more lawsuits will be brought in the future because the town negligently approved this or other projects, increasing the potential for accidents at this intersection or elsewhere? Here's another one. An accident involving a school bus on April 29th of 2013. Made the Channel 13 news. This is right just south of the railroad track. This is already a very dangerous intersection due to the alignment of the streets, the offsets, and the railroad. There have been many accidents here over the years. Additional traffic will only increase congestion and the potential for further accidents. Adding 140-plus or minus additional cars twice daily will add additional congestion to the already dangerous intersection during morning rush hour, the drop-off, and the afternoon pickup times, increasing the potential for more accidents. Currently, the west curb just south of the tracks is only six feet away, and is constantly jumped when making a southbound right onto the easement. You can see where everybody's turning in, they're driving right over the curb, there's not enough room. The town did this back when Martin Roush redid Lockanyata. Now it's coming back to haunt us. With increased pedestrian traffic from the school, attendees there are no, have no pedestrian crossing gates for the railroad crossings on public Lockanyata sidewalks. There's an example of what needs to be there. We have a sidewalk going right through a railroad track, railroad crossing, with no pedestrian protection, as it stands today. Then on May 25th, prior to going to the Board of Adjustments meeting for a variance, the academy owner took it upon himself to bring in the first building without a development plan, permits, or clearances. At the May 31st Board of Adjustment meeting, the board was informed that the academy began bringing in the buildings without the proper clearances. The owner was asked by a member of the board if this was in fact true, and he responded, yes, it was. The board decided to table the variance request until Union Pacific either approves or denies the use of their right-of-way before a decision to approve or deny the academy's request for variance. So the academy has already violated the building, town's building code a second time on June 13th, when they brought in the second building. Again, without a development plan, without permits, and without clearances. A few things to consider in closing. Previous owners of this parcel were unable to develop the property due to access issues and other restrictions. The last owner tried unsuccessfully for 10 years to sell the property until this year. Had the youth academy done their due diligence before purchasing the property, they would have found the property had serious development issues. The academy expects exceptions to be granted to them now for the continued development of their school project in the form of variances. The proposed required emergency access wrote, which is required by code, requires, violates the commercial code requirements as it crosses a 404 designated wash. And at one time, and I've been doing a lot of research, that parcel had access to it from the south off of Twin Buttes. The gate that the owner is using from the previous owner used to be a barbed wire fence. There was never a gate there, the previous owner put it in there, and he's calling it So the two separate code violations have been committed by the youth academy, and because of these two violations, the conditional use permit should be revoked. And the academy should be required to remove the buildings by enforcing the town's building I don't think anyone understands the magnitude of the safety concerns here. I take, I ask that you take that into deep consideration, and what the owner has done, thinking that he can just do whatever he pleases without permits. If I did that, I would be cited. So what gives him these special privileges? Do you have children that attend this school? Does the commission have children, family, grandchildren, friends that attend this school? Why is he getting away with all of this? Any questions?
Does any, but do you have any questions before we bring up the applicant?
I've got one question, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Were you, your slide 39, it talked about the board decided to table the variance until Union Pacific either approves or denies it right away. Did that approval ever come through?
No.
So how did this move forward if they tabled it, waiting for that?
I, we appealed, we appealed the CUP, the Cup, the conditional use permit. That brought us to you guys, to the council.
So it was planning and zoning that approved it?
Well...
With, with, I'm sorry. Well, planning and zoning approved it with those, those 11 conditions?
Right.
And then their appellant is appealing it to us. So they, P&amp;Z approved it to move forward.
Okay, what happened to the Board of Adjustments? How did they get involved in this?
Well, the Board of Adjustments is the one that tabled it.
Right. But at what part? So we went through P&amp;Z?
Went through P&amp;Z. They gave him the CUP with stipulations.
With the 11 conditions.
Correct. And then he filed for a variance to have the requirement of town code requirement for pedestrian and bicycle access.
That has not been granted because we still don't have, okay.
Right. And there's only 20 feet, so it wouldn't fit anyway.
Mayor and council, I just want to, I just want to respectfully acknowledge that we have yet to hear from the applicant.
Right.
So I just wanted to make sure that there are, there are variances to some of the conditions that have been outlined by the commission that the applicant is, is processing with the Board of Adjustment and seeking relief from, and that process hasn't played out yet.
Right. And, you know, back to item number 11 on the conditions, just like, I'm assuming, just like other projects, whether it was Copper Point or other things, it still falls on the applicant to finish getting those approvals, like from the railroad. Mr. Hockley, would you want to comment on that from a legal perspective? I was just thinking about Copper Point, and, you know, they had, didn't have a railroad crossing, they didn't have water, and we said, well, move forward, but you have to get all of these things before you can move your project forward.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council...
Is that similar?
You're, you're correct. Think of this, I, I'm worried about Ms. Cassidy not liking the way I'm phrasing this, but this is sort of a zoning junior case, right? Zoning gives you, gives the property owner the ability to do certain things, and then a conditional use permit is a subset of that. And if somebody gets zoning, that doesn't mean they don't have to put in railroad crossings or streets or access or any of that. So what you, what you say is correct. All this, all this would do, similar to zoning, and Ms. Cassidy, if I'm wrong, please jump in, because I don't claim to know your job, but what this does is it gives you the right to do something, but you still have to follow all the rest of the rules. They, they will need building permits, they will need to meet zoning specifications and all that.
Right. Okay, thank you.
And railroad requirements.
Right.
Okay, any other?
If I may, one other thing. As I mentioned a few moments ago, that Union Pacific has been contacted. They had no idea what was going on. This is from the head of their real estate department that is in charge of all their easements. And he hasn't heard from the owner yet, so we're told. And we got word today, the next speaker will probably discuss it, that they have not come to a formal decision yet. So the way I see it, this needs to be tabled and everything put on hold until we get the results from Union Pacific. You're talking about some seriously dangerous stuff here with two-way traffic next to that train that close. It's, it's beyond me, I can't even comprehend it. And any of you that have any children, if they were in the car and something happened that the driver got distracted, or fell asleep, or whatever it may be, you're untangling with a train, a moving train? Guess who's gonna win?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mayor?
Yes.
I, I would just, I would just like to note, for the record, that's, you know, the safety of our residents, children especially, is, is paramount in, in our minds as staff as we process these things. That's why one of the conditions on the approval of the CUP is tied directly to making sure that Union Pacific is on board. Staff doesn't have control on the timing of that and the coordination, but what we do know quite clearly is that that's a condition that needs to be met for the CUP to, to move forward. We have been in touch with Union Pacific. We expect to have some word back from them within the next week or so, but we have not heard conclusively on that matter. What I can also tell you, and what makes this a little less clear in everybody's mind, is that we're not talking about Union Pacific Right-of-Way formally. This is, this is a public easement with Union Pacific as a shareholder in that easement. So, you know, it doesn't make it quite clear in our minds how this is all going to play out. Who, you know, in dealing with other types of railroad right-of-ways, I mean, it really takes a Herculean effort and multiple years to do anything within that, within that real estate. As I looked at, and I'm an untrained eye on these things, but I did look at the easements, and it doesn't seem quite clear to me what, what strength or leverage the railroad has in this case. It almost appeared to me as though the road was there first, or the public easement, the private easement was there first, and then the railroad came in to have use of it. So it, it really is going to matter how the railroad and, and the applicant have to work things out, and if they can work it out, great, if they can't, well, that's, that's telling. But either way, that condition sits and has to be satisfied before the CUP can be processed.
Well, that's why I kind of brought up Copper Point or Sarita Farms. You know, typically you have zoning with these conditions, and then it's up to the applicant to meet those conditions, but allows them to move forward to see if they can. And if you can't, like, you know, Copper Point, if they had moved forward, if they can't, then it doesn't, the project doesn't move forward.
Yeah, but I, and I circled this because I thought this was the linchpin of this whole argument. The legal control slash ownership of the access easement has yet to be determined. We don't even have the basics done here yet. So we, we don't know who has the authority, who doesn't have the authority, when we don't even have ownership established.
Right. Yeah. Well, let's hear from the applicant, and then we'll move some deliberations.
We're having a speaker here.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we're, yeah, yeah, we're, we're hearing from, from the parties, and then if there's another speaker, then they'll talk during the public hearing.
Doing the public hearing, yes, absolutely. Yep, so.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. There are a number of, quite frankly, factual misrepresentations that I hope we can clarify, and I intend to help clarify those as well as a signing of motive that I wish to clarify as well. And I, I want to leave this up right where it's at, I do have a slide deck as well that I want to get to. But regarding the buildings being out there, I was approached by our modular company that we purchased this from about, I don't know, six weeks ago, saying they're out of space. Can we, can we go ahead and take delivery? My understanding and of this was, these are DMV-registered vehicles, and they are because they're on chassis. We could bring them in, leave them on those wheels, not install them, obviously, store them temporarily until this got worked out. Upon approval of the conditional use permit, we'd be able to move forward. If not, we've got to move it. Regarding proposed special treatment, there is no such thing. The town did their job and issued code violations, and as part of that process, there has to be forward motion on resolving those, the code violation. And I was told by town staff that the first step of that is this meeting tonight. If the conditional use permit is approved, the code violation is resolved. If not, then we, we have to move them. And we already have some backup plans in place for that if that ends up becoming a necessity. So this, this wasn't an intent to try to extract favorable treatment. This was an educator desperately trying to get ready for school to start with kids, making a mistake. I own that, we're going to fix it one way or the other, and we'll move on. Before we get to my, my presentation, I want, yeah, so I wanted to clarify just a couple of things. First of all, the legal situation of the access easement, if the, if the legal documents that we signed and the title search that was performed and the easements that that title search yielded have any weight whatsoever legally, and they do, there is no confusion around who owns this, this easement. there is no confusion around who owns this easement. This is a private parcel. If we want to put that to bed once and for all right now, we can go to Pima Maps right now, click on that parcel, and the owners will pop up of that parcel, and it's Braden and Bonnie Hayes. When the, well, I'll get to the, we'll get to Union Pacific here in a second because I've got some other pictures I want to show that include a particular, a point that was just not mentioned in the prior presentation. The access, just a couple of things to clarify. During the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the 2.48 trips per student per day, we spent a long amount of time addressing that. That comes from a manual that the traffic engineers use to compute trips per day. And in that traffic manual, there's a regression based on, I believe it was two different private schools that they reviewed to determine access. And they were, I think the smallest one was five or 600 students. In that manual itself, it says, "Don't use this data and extrapolate." If you try to extrapolate outside of the bounds of this data, it will not work. It's not representative. You should use site-specific data. You should use site-specific information, which we did. We have a traffic study and a traffic statement that was provided by a traffic engineer. Based on our school mix and our parent mix, we have car pools that are done. We have, because we're K through 12, we're a small private school, most families have multiple children that attend. So 2.48 trips, when you've got multiple children, this is not even close to anywhere realistic. We measured with our 70 current students, 20 trips, 20 cars at pickup during our most busy pickup day. So if you double that, we're looking at maybe 40 in and out. That's eighty trips during that peak morning time period. We don't touch the peak hours in the afternoon, so it's irrelevant for purposes of the traffic study. So that 2.48 trips is overstated. Let's see. I also wanted to clarify the reason why the board tabled the sidewalk request. It had nothing to do with Union Pacific right-of-ways. It had everything to do with an appeal that was filed on the last day that there was to file an appeal. And they wanted to see what the council's decision was before revisiting that. That was the purpose of pushing it back. The argument about there's not enough room, especially where they were showing where that curb is jumped, what that picture didn't show was the entire 24-foot-wide improved concreted access that the town put in to allow two-way traffic. So this is an intersection that has already been improved. This was a part of La Canyada. At some construction at some point, the town did this. There's 24 feet at that curb that people are jumping, so there's plenty of room to make that turn. Due diligence, so the owner, the property wasn't for sale. The owner has not been trying to sell this for the last 10 years. It wasn't listed. This was found through a friend, a personal contact, and it just so happened that he was on board with what we were trying to do, was excited about it, had decided that, you know, maybe after these 10 years, we're not gonna build a home here. Sold the property, and that was it. There is currently no access off Twin Buttes. I don't know if that was a thing at one point. It's not now, so it's simply not an option. Okay, so if we could, I did have a slide deck as well. If we could switch over to that. I didn't want to talk about the entrance and provide some, a little bit of a different perspective that takes. So if we could, just go to the next one. So very similar picture to what you saw. Before, you had two cars, and they were much closer together, and the car to the right was much closer to the track. And what was not taken into account, if you look at the left of that picture, there's an electric pole there that sticks into the roadway, I think, six or seven feet. We're moving that. If you go to the next slide, not only is there still room to the right of those vehicles, I didn't get as close to that property line as I could have because I didn't want to drive all over the fencing that had been pulled out. But if you take a look at this, there is still 11 feet from the right of the truck to the center of the tracks. There's five feet from the fence to the car from the electrical pole at the corner. So behind this, kind of, if I'm taking the picture here, right to my right, there's an electrical pole at the corner that is large. It services many, many homes. This is a local pole that serves a couple homes. We had Trico out earlier this week, and should not be a problem to move it. The one that is to my left is a much bigger deal. That's a TEP power pole, and it's enormous. So that one's not gonna be moved. But if you measure from that telephone pole, once this one's removed, to the center of the tracks, it's 33 and a half feet. The standard or the maximum railway size for a railroad car is 10 and a half feet. So from the center of the tracks out, you'll see an overhang from the center of five feet, three inches maximum. That 10 feet, six inches is the maximum size you can have to move freely within the United States and Canada. Anything other than that, you've got to have special track and all sorts of special permitting and things like that. So five and a half feet. If you take that five and a half feet from the center of the tracks and add three feet of safety buffer, you still have, that's eight and a half feet, you still have well over 20 feet of access. Now, none of that works if the assumption of the prior presenter is true, that that telephone pole remains there. So you remove that, and it solves all of those issues.
Mr. Hayes, I'm assuming that, sorry to interrupt, with the brushes and all of that, being that's your property, I'm assuming you're gonna be clearing all that brush and making the road as wide as possible.
Absolutely. You had to get the road as far away from the railroad track as possible. You know, another point that was made by a couple of parents after our last meeting that I hadn't thought of before, and I kind of feel silly that I hadn't thought of this before, but, you know, when you look at driving close or being next to a train, right, our parents, every day to bring their kids to school currently, hop on I-19, drive 75 to 65 miles an hour, depending on where they are, that close to traffic that's moving the same direction. But there's one big key difference between that traffic, or there's two big key differences between that traffic and this train. Number one is this train is going much slower, and number two is trains don't swerve. The person in the other lane can. If you go to the next picture, this is just kind of giving you an idea. Down near the entrance, so this is at the opposite end, not near La Canyada, but right before you go into the property, this is a fence post that works for that entrance and that gate that's down as you open up into the 30 acres. And it's exactly eight feet, three inches from the center of the tracks. You can see it's quite weather-beaten, has not been demolished or bulldozed or any such thing in however many years it's been sitting there. So again, yeah, that train looks scary, but the reality is that drive from Rancho Sarita on I-19 is much more dangerous. Okay, are there, I wanted to get to the Union Pacific easement concern, but before doing that, were there any other questions regarding the access? I don't have nearly as many pictures, but hopefully.
Councilmember Rouse?
I have a question. It's a K through 12 school, right?
Correct.
So what is the potential of the students driving themselves to school?
They would, yeah. Like any other legal driver, they'd be able to use that road.
So it's not just parents are gonna drive, it's students also?
Eventually, yeah.
About how many, it was a follow-up, about how many, you know, if it's limited to 140 students and you're talking about all the grades, what would you estimate the largest high school class be? Or where it would be now?
I mean, 15 to 20 possibly. And again, we have one student that's coming into that age group and is very excited about that. And already there are talks of car pools there as well, once it's legal for him, obviously, to have more students in the car or people in the car.
And I would assume if he had brothers and sisters.
And most, yeah.
He would be driving those other ones as well.
Yeah, especially, oh, sorry.
I think we also need to take that, you know, those same drivers are gonna be driving down the freeway at 75 miles an hour. So if you trust them.
They're not gonna come and sue us if something happens 75 miles an hour on the freeway. We will be liable here.
I don't understand how the town would be liable.
Yeah, it would be, well, that access is private property, the road that they're on. It would be private property. Would that not be correct, Mr. Hockley?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rouse was asking about liability, but if an accident happens on private property, which is the access, you don't, you wouldn't foresee the town would be liable for that, would you?
Typically not, that's correct.
Thanks. I'm sorry, continue. Don't get anybody else. Have any questions before he continues? He asked if he had any questions. Nope, okay.
All right, if we could go to the next slide. So regarding the Union Pacific right-of-way, you know, this is also quite clear. So this is the easement. So again, just to kind of, to set this all up, as part of the due diligence for purchasing commercial property like this, you get a title search done, and the title company's job is to make sure that they know every single encumbrance that there is on any of these properties, any easement, any limitations or restrictions whatsoever. Because if something happens later and there is a restriction and we get sued over it, they're ensuring that they're going to cover that. So title companies are kind of the last line of defense on making sure that we know everything that's going on with a property. If not, they would be overwhelmed by lawsuits and would not be in business for very long. So during our title search, there was a single railroad easement that is encumbering this property. And this is what it says. "Granter," which was the property owner, the time the easement was done, "does hereby convey unto the grantee," which was the company operating the railroad, "its successors and assigns," that's Union Pacific, "a perpetual easement," which just means it doesn't change if you change ownership, right? It passes from one owner to the other. "For the construction, operation, and maintenance of a railroad line and related structures and facilities upon a right-of-way of 50 feet in width, in, on, over, and across the north half of section," blah, 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 right? This parcel. "Reserving unto grantor," which is the property owner, "its successors and assigns," that's us, "the right to construct, use, and maintain roadways, drainage facilities, water, power, gas, and other utility lines and/or facilities along, across, under, over, and through the right-of-way herein conveyed to the grantee, provided only that the construction, use, and maintenance of such roadways, facilities, or lines shall not interfere with the railroad operations to be conducted on said right-of-way." We don't need to go to the next slide. That was already, I have some of the same language from the Union Pacific Railroad that talks about what their policy is on their property that they own. Their manual does not supersede our legal deed. I can create a manual today that says, you know, Chick-fil-A has to give me hamburgers to the end of time, but they're not legally obligated to do that just because my manual says so. And this is the same situation here. This is what is legal. Their manual that they use and distribute for all projects throughout the entire United States, where they have the, where they own the property, where they own the right-of-way, and where they don't have language like this, is what they use to develop those projects. This is different, and it's in the legal documentation. It's in the legal attachments to this property. You know, I keep hearing that there's confusion, but so far, I have yet to have anybody be able to provide me anything that adds anything to this. This is what it is. This is what it says. You've seen what the manual says. And this takes precedence by a long shot. A couple of the other, the comments, you know, "Union Pacific shall not guarantee or shall not allow parallel roadways." There's already a parallel roadway there. One of the property owners that appealed this decision has been the one out with a tractor maintaining that road and cleaning it up when it needs to be done. That's because there's a right to do that on this property, and you don't have to contact Union Pacific every time you're gonna go take a tractor out there and clean up the potholes. And this is why. This is why that's not an issue. If that's true, then every person along that access parcel should stop using that access. And they're not because it's in existence, and this is what allows all of us to use that in that way. And again, I do just want to point out, this is a developed entrance and developed intersection. It's already been done. Like, this has already been set. It's been approved by the town. This has all already kind of been done, so I'm not sure I understand why this is continuing to be an issue, that we can't have access along that road when it's already there. It's already been granted. It's been used for decades, and there's been maintenance on that road for decades. Now, as far as condition number 11, I did want to bring that up. This is the one that says that we are supposed to get with Union Pacific and meet all of their requirements. I'm concerned that the way that that is written means that we, as the owners of that property, that could be construed as meaning that we have to ignore our property rights and subject ourselves to whatever the Union Pacific feels like they want to do, regardless of whether they have a legal right to do it or not. Also, there was a case or a claim made that we have not reached out to the Union Pacific Railroad. We have. I haven't returned our calls. And again, that was not to request permission, but to give them an advisement that this is the situation. We're planning on doing this. We're no way gonna obstruct their work any more than the tractors that have been up and down there before have obstructed their work. Kind of more of a courtesy. But I would like to at least get clarification that the intent of, that condition number 11 is not intended to supersede or eliminate our property rights as included in our deed and in our title. So that would be just a point of clarification I'd like to request if the town and if the council decides to approve the conditional use permit.
Mr. Hockley, did you want to make a, provide us any clarity on that? On how that condition reads and against a private property owner having access to their property and how that would be taken care of or clarified?
Give me a minute, please.
Okay.
Too many windows.
While he's doing that, could I ask a question?
Yes.
Based on what you know, based on what you've seen, and the logistics of getting in and out of there, are you concerned for the safety of those kids?
I'm not. And nor do I think anyone that's been using that road. I mean, they're living there, they're using it, so I'm assuming, and it was obviously safe enough for the gentleman to get out with his camera, standing outside of a car right next to that moving train. So I, you know, it looks scary and it sounds scary, but I've been up and down there when the railroad's been going by before. Didn't have my camera quite as handy as my neighbor has been able to do. But, you know, with the way it is, absolutely yes, because there's simply not room for 20 feet, plus to be far enough away from the road to be safe. When we move that pole, and if we get the condition approved to not require a sidewalk, that's another thing I wanted to bring up. That is a code requirement. We meet every single condition for requesting a variance. The property, as we purchased it, doesn't allow it. The neighbor that lives right there doesn't want it. So it's not a detriment to the neighbor to not have a sidewalk there. It's a benefit, in fact. So anyways, there's a lot of reasons not to do it. Not least of all is the fact that most of our, or none of our demographic is walking or riding a bicycle anyways. And even if the town were to force us somehow, or requires us not force us, if the town does require us to still figure out a way to put a sidewalk in there, we're gonna make it a policy that you're not sending your kids along here. It's not safe. You know, there's wildlife out there, and we don't want kindergarteners walking along that road where, you know, coyote are walking across or whatever, where there's, I mean, there's a long road along that parcel, and then you still have a long road to get from the entrance to the building. The buildings will be fenced, and the buildings will be safe, but it's just not a, it's not a situation where it's necessary for us to operate the way we intend to operate, and we wouldn't allow it anyways.
I'm assuming it's very different than if you're living in the new homes by Wright's and Ridge, and literally you could walk to school. I'm guessing it's probably Miles, your closest student, who would live.
Yeah, and there, I mean, there are neighborhoods there where students potentially could. But again, you know, we have a family that actually lives nearby who, unfortunately, a lot of our families weren't able to be here today. We have a lot of families out of town. I think we have quite a few watching via streaming. But who said, you know, there's no way I'm gonna send my kid to walk down there. They were out jogging one time, and a bobcat goes across, right? And, you know, bobcats typically don't eat children, but it's still a concern. And not to mention that we're, you know, a block off of a major trafficking roadway. I mean, there's just a lot of reasons why it's not safe. And not allowing pedestrian access doesn't really, if anything, it hurts the school. There may be people that we're not able to accept, but as a private school, there's still lots of great options around, great expectations is right down the street. So it may not be our best move marketing, but we feel strongly this is a great place for kids to get outside and get lots of hands on learning.
Mr. Mayor? I was gonna say that it's not uncommon for schools not to allow walking and pedestrian type into their access. SPS doesn't allow it. SIS doesn't allow it. There's many schools. MS, middle-schooler kids, cannot bike to school. The school has said, "No pedestrian walkways into that school." So I don't think it's uncommon for a school to say, "This isn't allowed in our..." in our school.
So, and I did want to, that reminds me of one other thing. So a, a private school is a conditional, type one conditional use for this zoning. A permitted use for this zoning is a public school.
Right.
So, public schools are automatically allowed. If we were a public school, or if we were a charter school, we would not be having this conversation. It would, we would just be doing it, right? We wouldn't be going through a variance request. And, and not only that, but public schools are not required to follow any of the zoning laws. So this variance request to remove a sidewalk. So we're, we're kind of in this position where we're, we're a smaller school that is going to have less of an impact on the community, yet being held to a much more stringent standard than a much larger, I mean, you could, at a parcel like that, you could have thousands of kids back in an area like that. And there's nothing that anybody could do to stop it.
Right.
So, you know, there's, yeah.
And I'm assuming too, if it was a public school, there would be buses going down, which are much wider, you know, just as a point of clarification.
No, they, a public school may not choose to use that particular parcel, but they could. I mean, we could, you know, if we chose to change to a charter school today, this would all be done. And we would just do it. But we're, because we, we bring God into our curriculum, we can't do that. So we're, we're held to this standard.
Mr. Hockley?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, actually, conditions nine, 10, and 11, all three of those don't even need to be there because they're already required. The developer would not be able to develop this project without working with Union Pacific to, to meet the requirements.
And that kind of, I know I'm doing this ad nauseam, but it kind of goes back to the Copper Point, you know, project that you, there are certain things you have to do before, you know, you, we could give zoning all day long on that project or anything else. But until those necessities are met, which a lot of times are beyond our control, you can't move forward.
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. And in fact, as I was talking with one of the council members today about this, just because you have zoning doesn't mean you don't need to meet the building code. I mean, you have to meet all the other codes. And I would also remind the council that a variance going to the, to the, to the board is not really your, in your jurisdiction. That's in their jurisdiction. That'll be up to them.
Well, I had that same thought about the fire code, because it almost appeared like they could not meet the fire code. But wouldn't that be another thing that, oh, nine, that was, oh, I'm sorry.
That's number nine. And, and nine simply says you're going to follow the law.
Right.
Which they are.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other questions on, on Union Pacific? So I, I don't know that I understand what that does with condition. I mean, it sounds like condition 11, you're saying that just doesn't, it's something we're going to have to do anyways. We have to meet the requirements. Do I understand that that's correct, that we still are able to exercise our legal rights under this property?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that, that's, the, the, the issues with Union Pacific are between two private entities.
Right.
And that's not a governmental issue. That's between those entities.
I think if we move forward, that, that we should have put in the motion to remove items nine, 10, and 11. It's a suggestion, not putting that out yet. We haven't done the open meeting, open thing yet. Yeah.
So, so I think obviously the access and, and the railroad are the two biggest concerns that have been expressed by the opposition. So I want to make sure if there are any other questions before moving on to my last point. We get those answered.
I think we're good.
So my, my last one was there, there's a condition that says that there can be no outdoor amplification of sound. Again, this one is one that, as I've thought about, I feel like is also kind of going a, a little bit redundant. There's already noise ordinances that everyone has to follow. There, if, you know, it seems interesting that this school, if we want to take a speaker outside, right, and play a little bit of music or something, not blare it to the world, but, you know, in reason, if we wanted to do that. We do have a couple of, you know, programs. We have a Christmas program and a spring program. And, you know, they're, they're singing. And we do have speakers, but it's enough just so that our little audience can hear. And that's it. We've done this in the middle of the Green Valley Village for years, which is predominantly 55-plus, and have had no complaints. It's been a fun community building thing. We invite the community out. And as I read that, we wouldn't be able to continue with that. But under the noise ordinances, we could do that on our personal property that's just right next to it. So again, I feel like this is a condition that's being applied above and beyond what every other usage in the zone can do. There are already ordinances that we have to follow. We can't go put up loudspeakers and bullhorns and just blast. We can't do that anyways. But the way this is written, the way I understood that was intended was that none of that can happen, which applies a more strict requirement than any other ulterior, or any other alternative usage. Not to mention, least of all is, you know, public school could, could do all of that if they wanted to and.
Well, that was actually, you beat me to the punch, because when I was reviewing these, I, I was going to probably focus on that one myself, because I was sort of playing it out. Ants has had a 911 memorial where people will sing, you know, "God Bless America" and those types of things. And when I saw you could have a basketball court, you know, in a, in a baseball field, well, you could be cheering much louder than, you know, having a, a quick outdoor singing recital at Christmas time, singing joy to the world. So I think the intent of that was, you know, not to oppose the noise ordinance. You know, if you were a home living in there, and I had a graduation party, you know, in a pool in the backyard.
Right.
I'm guessing the noise would be a little bit louder than what your intent is. So one of my suggestions was going to be, you know, sort of reversing that, just saying, you know, you can't, you can't violate any noise ordinance, which is more encompassing as opposed to, you know, I was at the chamber mixer the other night, and Randy had a little portable speaker just to reach from me to Noah, you know, in attendance, to say, thank you for coming. It wasn't meant to, you know, for McDonald's to hear, you know, Randy on there. So that's kind of where my, I was going from an amplification. I know the intent of it. I just don't think it was probably written correctly for, in my mind, but.
Okay. I think that's it unless there.
That's it?
Unless there are any questions for me.
Questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I will open up the, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, although, although I, I made a comment about nine, 10, and 11, I don't think there's any harm in leaving them there. I think it's safer to leave them there just to make sure and to support the, the decisions of the planning commission.
But why would we do that if they're two private entities and the government has no business in it?
Should we, because to that point, can we, should we put, you shouldn't murder anybody? Because that is a, we don't want anybody to murder, but do we have to put it in?
But only if they're bad.
Right.
How about this? Thank you, Mr. Hockley. I will take that into consideration with my motion.
On there. So I will declare the public hearing open. I have two speaker cards already. There might have been some confusion from the appellant that if you do want to speak to it, please fill out a, a card over there. I, you can fill it out afterwards if you like, but I'll start with the folks that I already have a card from. And then after all the cards have gone through, if somebody would like to speak and hasn't filled out a card, please do so. Mr. Aaron Palmer. And the appellant and the applicant, you know, as part of the presentation, any of the speakers of the public hearing will be using our, just as a review, will be using our, our light system. So if you can, it'll be red, yellow, and then, excuse me, green, yellow, and then red after the three minutes. So if you can keep your comments to three minutes, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I found the two presentations very informative. As someone who drives La Cañada every day of the school year, I think it puts a burden on the town to fix the intersection. Northbound La Cañada has no left turn lane for that access road. There's no left turn lane. How are we going to accommodate whatever number of cars it is, 60 or 70, half one way, half the other? How are we going to accommodate a line of 60 cars, 30 cars, piling up in the middle where there's no turn lane? If you do put a turn lane there, you've then blocked El Toro. They've got to go across the turn lane that you've now created to go south on La Cañada. I think the town needs to look at what responsibility they have to have traffic flow. If they're going to allow a business of any kind, whether it's a public school, whether it's a charter school, whether it's a private school, or the commercial use, where they have a messed up intersection right at a railroad track, that they should consider fixing it before they permit those type of high-traffic uses. I also think to send a business down, or any school down, we wouldn't be on a dirt road. We would be on a paved road. We would have a sidewalk. It's just the way the code is, and it's just what makes sense. To get to a business that's going to have 140 kids, we're not talking adults, we're talking kids. You have a road, you have a sidewalk. Okay? Who owns the land? I think people should be able to use their land like they should. But I think the town's messed up to think they should put something that potentially traffic-increasing on an intersection that can't handle it. It doesn't have a turn lane. It's right up at a intersection, as one presentation showed, school buses get rammed into. If we're having trouble at that intersection, to respond to a business at that end, I guess maybe this is a fire code thing, there's no second access to that school. Every school I know of, private, owned by a church, owned by a charter school, has two accesses, two access to the school. How is emergency services going to get to 140 of our children when it's one dirt road that's got an accident or another potential problem in front of it? I hate to bring up tragedy, but we know there's tragedy, and we know people need to get to schools quickly. Okay? And if we're going to have a messed up intersection with one access, we're asking for more tragedy. So if the town's going to let the conditional use permit continue, they need to fix the intersection before they do. I agree, property owners should be able to use their property as legally they should. But the town also should think about the mess they're creating on a conditional use permit that they don't have to approve at this time until they fix the intersection. Thank you.
Next, I have Joanne Gallagher. Oh, John. Sorry. I couldn't read the writing.
I'm also with Ellen.
Yeah, yes. You're, you're considered at the public hearing part, so the, the light system that we just used will be.
You have a limited time.
Perfect.
From that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. John Gallagher, 16908 South La Cañada. And I'm on the other side. I'm on the north side of the railroad tracks. So I also have that same easement conditions. And like the applicant said, he wants to be able to use this property, and that's true. He can, he can drive through it. But that is a Union Pacific right-of-way, 25 feet from the center of tracks, which does not allow you to do anything but drive. Being the approach of the, of the, from the La Cañada is 24 feet, that's correct, but it narrows, as soon as it's out of the Town or Serita right-of-way, it narrows to 20 feet on his property, which not is, is not a significant amount of, of space for emergency vehicle. Pima County standards require 24 feet for the two-lane traffic like that. So let's say we have an emergency, and we have a car broke down in that lane. Got to be able to get the vehicles through there. That's one of my concerns. The other thing is, if that road was to be paved, we're going to have a problem with Union Pacific. One, for drainage, disturbing the ballast of, of the railroad, because there is an elevation change as it goes in west towards the school. And then again, I don't know that UP is going to allow that to be paved, based on the maintenance that they have to do on the track. You're talking, it's not up there, but the 25 feet from the center of that track, that does overlap onto the owner's property. But that's the, that's the right-of-way that was given to the railroad. And there's nothing that you could do to improve that condition, to do, make improvements on that property to allow for the school access. You know, there's train accidents. They say that the vehicles and, and pedestrians are hit by a train every three hours in the United States. That's, that's a pretty big number. And with the kids, I think that that, that's just a, that's a number that's way too high to take a chance with the kids in that area. I would like to see the conditional use permit to be tabled. I think just kind of going backwards with the Union Pacific, not, not having that information from them. The applicant seems to think that he can move forward. And right now, I, I think there's a misconception with that, that don't we need to find out what needs to happen with the railroad before the conditional use permit could actually be to go forward? You know, town's responsible. The town's given the, the entrance, the 24-foot right-of-way in their right-of-way, the entry to that property. Then the railroad comes back, which is a federal offense, comes back and says, no, you can't do that. No, it's, there's too much danger there. And so the town says, go ahead and do it. But the railroad says no. And with Mr. Palmer just brought up, the traffic impact on La Cañada is going to be significant. There's, there's no turn lanes, like he mentioned. And being that rail, the actual rail, railroad track rail is only six feet to that curb, the north side of that curb on that 24-foot approach. Six feet. Okay, that's, so I ask that the conditional use permit be tabled or denied at this point.
Thank you. Appreciate it. That is all the cards. Oh, I forgot my little announcement. I could somewhere. Jeff Allen. So since you sit up here in another capacity, you know how the light system works.
Yeah, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and, and Council. I was not going to speak tonight, but I was actually quoted on the screen. So I thought I better at least speak my piece on that. I'm a member currently of the Board of Adjustment and of the Parks and Rec Commission, of both which, I guess, may or may not get approved to go on. And maybe after I say this.
That's the next item.
We did have a meeting on May 31st on the Board of Adjustment. And I don't, I won't get into my prior job of Parks and Rec, where I dealt with the railroad for 12 years and never got anywhere with them. But, because there's questions on whose ownership it is anyways. But I was the one that asked the petitioner, you know, if he put a building on that property. And he said, yes, he did. He did not, at that time, say, what did he use? Mobile license trailer that makes it sound more mobile. And now there's additional one. So he had done that two weeks prior to my question. And now there's another one there. You know, having been in, in a lot of these positions, I, I feel like he's not being forthcoming all the time on all the stuff that's happening. So there's stuff going on, and I think that's one of the things that we need to look at. He got a conditional approval to go and do things based upon the agreements, the requirements that he needed. And if, and my opinion is, he's gone ahead and done stuff without that approval. And, and, you know, he may be waiting a long time to get railroad, if, if he doesn't call a railroad approval, but to get at least a settlement of that. So I just wanted to bring that up. We have another meeting on, on Wednesday. And I, I guess this is on the agenda, but I, I don't know what we're going to be able to decide on it. You know, we, I could not support what, what his request was, and therefore, other members motioned to table it. So we agreed to, you know, table that. So just to give you the update on, on our meeting then. Thank you.
And Anna, I think you received a email or comment that you'd like to read for, for us?
Yes, Mayor Murphy. Thank you. I'll pull that up for you. I received an email at 6:5 PM from Mary Ann Scott. She says, "Dear Mayor Murphy and Town Council Members, I wanted to have my statement on record, being that I, decision already voted on by the Planning and Funding Commission that the approval of the conditional use permit for Liberty Youth Academy..." that the approval of the conditional use permit for Liberty Youth Academy to stay in place. The school will add so much to our wonderful community and aligns it with the new motto of Be Saborita. It has been a wonderful school for my children for the past four years, and the outdoor space and plans for the unique type of education it will offer will only benefit the town. Thank you, Mary Ann Scott."
Thank you, Anna. Um...
Do I have to fill out a card to do a response or how does that work?
Because the applicant was mentioned in the previous one, I mean, I think it's appropriate that he be allowed to respond, I mean, if we can, we can, he can do a public, I mean, a card for three minutes, but...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I, I think that's appropriate, but I, but this is probably a good time for him to point out, the issue regarding the Board of Adjustment is not before the council tonight.
Right.
The issue before the, before the council tonight is the appeal of the conditional use permit, which is the use. Everything relating to the, to the Board of Adjustment relates to the Board of Adjustment, which is a quasi-judicial board, and, and you are not. So, if the response is regarding that comment, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay. Was it to that, was it a response to that particular item or?
No.
No, okay.
Are there any other comments?
Yeah, since we're on the second round, any other comments? I, I don't have any more cards. Oh, we have another one? So just come up and speak, and then just promise that you'll fill it out and turn it in before, okay? I trust you.
Hi, my name is Jamie Dull. I'm a parent, my daughter attends Liberty Youth Academy, and I wanted to address two things. You asked a very important question, asking if he believed that our children would be safe. As a mother, I can tell you, I absolutely agree. I think that the way we've been traveling to the current school, as mentioned on I-19, we have to be very aware of our surroundings. We have our most precious possessions in our car with us, our children, that's not gonna change. The second thing, the last person brought up a question of character of Mr. Hayes, and I just wanted to address that. Him and his wife, his wife is actually my daughter's kindergarten teacher, are the most incredible people. I don't think that their character should ever be questioned. I understand that there's been some questions or concerns regarding the project, but I believe that everything he has told the council tonight is very true and forthcoming. Those are the two things I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else before I go back to Mr. Hayes? Okay. It's not yet, you promised, I know where to find you. Probably here on some occasions, but...
So, I really like property owners and wanna make them be successful with their property, and I don't appreciate people making accusations against them when they're using their property, they worked for the town before, and then they don't, they're benefiting from their property and their access, and then they're disparaging them for trying to use their property. But, I know, that was coming. When you ask for special conditional use permit, that's because you're gonna use that property differently than it was originally zoned for. That is under conditions, which means that there are impacts, and those impacts have to be considered. So, I want the town to try to find a way to make this be successful for the property owner, but it does have to protect the existing infrastructure and the those that, that conditional, you know, there, there, there are trade-offs. I don't think they should be, my, my father dealt with this, the business he worked with, 'cause he worked in a water company and they had to put in things, they always had to get a conditional use permit, and it was amazingly complicated, but sometimes property owners would ask from the neighboring property, from, "It's gotta be iron rod fencing of this color with this type of rockwork," and I, I don't think we should go to that extent. I think property owners have, have the right to do their property as it needs to be, but if you are gonna do impacts to the surrounding area, there is sidewalk zoning, there is other impacts that are there, you have to consider, does this meet the, the requirements and is this, is this important? I, I do worry if we throw away all of our zoning rules, our sidewalks will look like Tucson's, which they don't exist, you know, that there is some balance there, and there's balance to the roadway infrastructure. So, I want the product to be successful, I think we should work with people to try to find a way to make people be able to use their property that they own, but we do have to take in consideration the, the community as a whole, the, the full level of infrastructure. So, thanks.
Thanks. I'll be watching, you fill out that card before you leave, too. Any, before I go back to Mr. Hayes, anybody else like to speak? Mr. Hayes?
Just a few points of clarification also. There, we had a traffic engineer take a look at this, provide a statement, and saw the impact being minimal, given the intersection, the way that it's set up, it's his professional opinion, this is gonna be fine, it's a, it's under the 100-trip threshold, which is, according to, to him, very small. There is an issue with turning left, you can turn left there, people do it all the time, there isn't a left turn, dedicated left turn lane, but again, when you look at the demographics and where children come from in this town, it's mostly coming from the north, so it's not exactly 50/50 split, so that's important to keep in mind as well. The school bus accident has come up a couple times, and it was admitted, both times, that was not at this intersection, it was further down the line. Traffic congestion with Great Expectations, we brought this up during the Planning and Zoning Commission, but just something to keep in mind, it's a very different situation. So when you go and you map out the amount of, or the length of road that Great Expectations has to queue people and funnel people through, from the time you pull off of La Cañada and go through the dirt road, and then make your way out through the parking lot, and then back onto La Cañada, you have about a thousand lineal feet, all gravel, incidentally. Oh, and by the way, the town, one of the town code is paving, so we're, it would have to be paved, that much dust, you know, that much traffic going through, you have to do something other than dirt, whether, you know, it's gravel at a minimum, I think paving though is what's required in the code to address that issue. So that's something that will have to be talked about in those, or addressed in those other plans and everything that we still have ahead of us. But, you see, you have about a thousand lineal feet where Great Expectations is dropping off students, they don't have a, you know, a carpool system that we try, I mean, we push very, we have an entire system for trying to get pe, parents connected, to get them to carpool, that doesn't exist, I think that probably still happens on its own, but they have about, I called them up a couple weeks ago, they have about 300 students. We have closer to 3,000 lineal feet to queue, we have about 2,000 lineal feet, once you get past the access parcel. So when you open up into the 30 acres, we've got 2,000, so just on that 30 acres, we have in a double, the, we have double the length for half the students, and that doesn't even take into account the additional 2,000 feet from the entrance to the property out to La Cañada. So it's a very different animal. If you line up cars, you know, that are 15 feet long, end to end, we could fit every single one of those cars in a line from the school, and we don't even get to the gate. So there's, it's a very different situation than you have at Great Expectations where, again, because Great Expectations falls under the public category, they didn't have to go through any of these things, so where does it back up to? Onto La Cañada. That's not our situation, it's in and out, and it takes a few seconds for each car to get in and out of that, and out of that area. So, just kinda keep that in mind, there's some very different characteristics too, as relates to traffic, that are kind of easy to overlook but are very important. I'm not gonna rehash the access in, in Union Pacific Railroad again, there's, there's strong legal precedent there, there's a pole that has to move that completely changes the dynamics of everything. If you ignore that, then everything that was talked about is true. You know, and all of those reasons are reasons why sidewalk doesn't make sense, so it makes that case quite well. You know, as far as character goes, and, you know, I, all I can say is I, you know, I didn't use the exact same verbiage at the meeting in May that I used right now, but it was still the, the same thing. Yeah, we did, and we owned it, we make mistakes, we're doing the best we can, and we'll fix it, we'll fix it, so, I think that was it, thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any more speaker cards.
I won't speak.
Okay, will you allow Mr. Hayes a few minutes, so I'll, I'll allow you a few minutes?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you again. This was something that we weren't afforded, or I wasn't afforded, at the Planning and Zoning Commission. Three minutes, no more speaking. The owner had all the time in the world to talk, that was unfair, should be looked into. The youth academy, whether they're calling it a private school or not, which, well, they are, it is a for-profit business. The town is pro-home business. You put in this kiosk thing out, I don't know if it's still there, but trying to get everybody to start home businesses, you only allowed them five vehicles, if I'm not mistaken, to travel in and out to that house. What gives him the right to change our life and our lifestyle for him to come in and build a school and bring in all these additional vehicles? What? If that thing, if that property was developed with, what, what the town did is they changed the zoning on it to eliminate wildcatting, which I can understand, but what gives him the right to come in and make an appeal so he can make a profit off of this school when I can't do that with 40 to 140 cars? Hello?
Thank you.
I yield back.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
There was a, there was a comment made that questioned the integrity of the process that played out at the, at the commission meeting. The reason why the appellant is, was given leniency on more time tonight is because this, that the appellant is part of a formal process with you tonight, as, as part, this is why it's in front of you.
Right.
Which is why there wasn't the three-minute clock applied tonight. However, at the commission meeting, there was a, a standard three-minute that was applied to comments from the public, but again, that's how we handle normal council meetings. So that's the difference, thank you.
Right, thank you. I, well...
I think we're good.
What's that? I think we're good, from there, I mean, at least from the people that have spoken. Anybody else like to speak? Seeing no movement, I will close the public hearing. Council members, any questions for staff? Anna's still on the phone, remember, thank you, Anna, for holding on. At this time? Nope? Okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion if somebody would like to pursue one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. I think this is, I think you were great when you made the comment about Serita Farms in Copper Point. This is not the first time that this council has been with issues with cups and having to approve projects that don't have all the answers before we approve them, but the, the nice thing about that is it's not the town's responsibility to make sure the answers get fixed or answered, the questions to get answered, I should say, it's actually the responsibility of the applicant to do that, and they cannot move forward in their project unless those answers, those questions are answered, so it just waits until they do. And so it's, it's not onerous upon us, it's onerous upon them. So having said that, I move to uphold the Planning and Zoning Commission approval with the condition of the Type 1 Condition Use Permit for Liberty Youth Academy with the removal of number 2, 9, 10, and 11 conditions.
Second. Any further discussion before we go to the vote? No? I will call for the question. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the vote is three to two to approve. Thank you. Thanks for everybody being here. Item number 13, Madam Clerk.
Discussion and possible appointments to the Board of Adjustment, Parks and Recreation Commission, and Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you. And what I was gonna do, unless we hear otherwise, Councilmember Morales, I'll let you speak first, and then Vice Mayor Egbert will speak second, and then I'll speak third. And we'll just group together unless there's anybody in opposition to any, I can separate him. Councilman? Nope? I'll make the motion for you. Under Councilmember Morales, we'll be reappointing Jeffrey Allen to the Board of Adjustment, Nathan Barrett to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and Diane Huckins to the Park and Recreation to fill terms ending June 30th, 2026. Vice Mayor?
I move to reappoint Michael Hernandez to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and Erin Thompson to the Parks and Recreation Commission to fill the terms ending in June 30th, 2026.
And I will move to reappoint Bryce Elliott to Board of Adjustment, Mitchell Mariante, Maramontis to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and Jeffrey Allen to the Park and Rec Commission to fill terms ending in June 30th, 2026. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we need a second? Yeah, we need a second.
Second.
Okay, we got, we got lots of seconds, thank you. All those in favor now signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks, I know some of you are here, thanks for your volunteerism and your continued volunteerism, 'cause most of these are reappointments, it's very important to our town. We've heard P&amp;Z come up, we've heard Park and Rec come up, Commission tonight, Board of Adjustments tonight, so everybody, I think you can understand how important that is to our town, so, thanks for being here and your willingness to serve until 2026, appreciate that very much. Next is our special meeting that will now be entering and to adopt the final budget of fiscal year 2023. Madam Clerk?
Public hearing, discussion, and possible adoption of Resolution Number 2022-0717, adopting the fiscal year 2023 budget in the amount of $107,114,960.
Thank you, and Mr. Mariotti, who I will now call the stoic Mr. Mariotti after watching that recruiting video a little earlier, our finance director will be giving us a brief overview, we've gone through this a couple of times, but after his presentation, we'll be opening the public hearing and potentially approving the budget tonight. Mr. Mariotti?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, they just told me to be myself. Turned out okay.
Tonight or in the video?
Yeah, in the recruitment video. So anyways, thank you. Tonight you'll have an opportunity to adopt the budget for fiscal year 2023, and you'll be able to do that, but only after we have that public hearing, so this is part of the legislative process, so. At your last meeting, you adopted the tentative budget, and pursuant to state law, that budget was advertised, along with a public hearing notice for tonight's meeting, and it's also made available at the town clerk's office, and we posted it on the website, and all those are legally required in state statute. So tonight is less about me making a long presentation and giving a long discussion, so my presentation will be relatively short, but it is more about us listening and giving the public an invitation to weigh in on the budget before it's adopted. So with that, the budget for fiscal year 2023 is programmed in the amount of $107.1 million. The budget is balanced in that our financing sources are equal to our financing uses. So this budget is $12.2 million, or 13% more than the current year budget, and it's more because we have more financing sources available next year than we do in the current fiscal So this pie chart shows you the composition of our funding sources, and it identifies where we get our money from to pay for the elements in the budget. Our beginning balances total 53.3 million and make up approximately half of the total budget. Our beginning balances represent the amount of money that's not being spent in the current fiscal year that's gonna carry forward to next. You see that we're very reliant on revenues from other governments, we rely on the state for our operations, and in our capital plan, we rely upon the federal government in the form of our ARPA funding to pay for a lot of our capital projects. So, these total $23.4 million in the budget and make up 22% of the total. Taxes come in at $15.6 million, or 15% of the budget. This would include our general and contracting sales taxes or transaction privilege taxes. It also includes franchise fees, and it includes the property tax levies for the CFDs. It's worth noting that the town is not proposing any tax rate changes, and it's not proposing any changes to our taxing structure as part of this budget. Charges for services total 5.5 million, or 5% of the total budget, and most of this is for our monthly sewer user fees that we charge in the wastewater utility. Licenses and permits are programmed at $3.5 million, or 3% of the total. These revenues are mostly generated from new growth, development, and construction in the town. Other revenues come in at $2.3 million, or 2% of the total, representing court fines, investment income, and miscellaneous revenues that are not classified elsewhere. And then rounding out our sources, we have about $3.5 million, or 3% of the total, for debt proceeds and capital project carryforwards. And then rounding out our sources, we have about three and a half million dollars, or three percent of the total, for debt proceeds and capital project carryforwards. Those are the funding sources. Those are equivalent to the funding uses, going back to that equation I showed earlier. This pie chart shows you how we're going to use the money. First, we don't spend everything that we have in the budget. So in fact, the largest component of the budget on the use side, forty-four point eight million dollars, or forty-two percent of the total, is for ending balances. And that would represent money that we're not planning on spending next year that will carry forward to fiscal year twenty twenty-four and the future. So the rest of the budget, sixty-two point three million dollars, or fifty-eight percent of the total, is, would comprise the spending component of our budget. Debt service comes in at seven point two million dollars, and just like individuals do with their mortgages, the town also issues debt for capital projects, capital infrastructure, capital assets, sort of those long-term assets. And we use debt to finance some of those improvements in the town. And over the course of time, we pay that back through, with a principal and interest payments, and we include that in the budget. The capital budget is twenty-two point four million dollars, and that represents about twenty-one percent of the total budget, and that will pay for thirty-three capital projects. Also includes Rancho Sarita Community Facility District infrastructure improvements and some other less significant capital items. Operations at thirty-two point six million dollars, which is thirty percent of the budget, is allocated across fifteen different departments. And here you can see what those departments are sorted from highest to lowest, highest being on the left. The outlier obviously is the Police Department, whose budget is pushing twelve million dollars. It's almost three times more than the next most significant budget. And that's just indicative of our focus on public safety, but it's also indicative of the department's round-the-clock operations. You'll notice that the other departments with the larger budgets, so closer to the left side of the, of the chart there, would represent those departments that provide services directly to our residents and other constituents, like our development community. The administrative departments have smaller budgets generally. Many of the town's revenues have some sort of restriction or limitation on them, and can only be spent on specific functions or specific expenditures. So we use fund accounting to account for that. It's required, and it's used to ensure proper tracking of those revenues and how we use those revenues in the form of expenditures. Each fund is in balance in the same way that the overall town budget is balanced. So for each fund, we have funding sources equal to funding uses. The General Fund is the fund that accounts for most of our operations and makes up nearly half the total budget. The Ranch of Sarita and Quail Creek CFDs are legally separate entities with their own budgets, and those governing bodies have already approved those budgets for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Because of our relationship with the CFDs, we're required to incorporate those budgets into the town budget. Those comprise twenty percent of the total town budget. The CIF stands for the Capital Infrastructure Improvement Fund. This is our capital projects fund, where most of our general capital projects are tracked. The CIF is eighteen percent of the total budget. WW is our Wastewater Enterprise Fund, which accounts for the operational and capital activities of the wastewater utility. That utility essentially functions like a business where its charges and fees pay for its operations. It should be self-sufficient. The wastewater fund is nine percent of the total budget. The Highway User Revenue Fund, or HERF, is where we track our share of the state fuel tax and pay for our streets division costs, as well as pavement management and traffic signal program costs. The HERF is four percent of the total budget. And lastly, we have the GARS Fund, or the Grants and Restricted Sources Fund, which comprises two percent of the total budget. So in summary, the beginning balances are fifty-three point three million dollars. That's what we'll come into the year with. Next year, we expect to collect fifty point three million dollars in new revenues. We'll have other sources, namely new debt proceeds coming in at three and a half million dollars, giving us total sources of one hundred and seven point one million, and that is the budget figure. The budget plan calls for sixty-two point three million dollars in spending, leaving ending balances of forty-four point eight million dollars. Comparing our beginning and ending balances, that's a change of eight point five million dollars decrease. And that's associated with one-time spending on projects that are identified in our capital plan. And most of those costs are paid for with debt that's already been issued, so debt proceeds carrying forward to next fiscal year, as well as our ARPA funding allocation. So we often tout that we put together our annual budgets within a five-year timeframe, and this slide summarizes all of our planned activities and looks at our cumulative fund balances for all funds over that timeframe. After our reserves and restricted balances are accounted for, we have excess funds with no specific restrictions. And these would be our available balances that are reflected in the white area of the bar charts. So over the next five years, our available balances go from twenty-three point two million dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-three up to thirty-eight million dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-seven, representing an average annual surplus of three point seven million dollars annually in that timeframe. And that's why we have great confidence when we say that we believe that the budget that's presented to you today for approval is sustainable, at least over the short term. So next steps, we have to hold our public hearing, after which council has an opportunity to make reductions or reallocations in the budget. Again, recall that when the tentative budget was approved at our last meeting, that that set the budget ceiling for the year ahead. So you can still make changes, you can reduce the overall budget or shift things around, but you can't have it any higher than the one hundred and seven point one million dollars. What you have before you is a resolution that, if approved, would adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget in one hundred and seven million, one hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. That resolution also establishes a commitment for reserves pursuant to our town code, which would be set up in the General Fund of five and a half million dollars. This is five hundred thousand dollars more than what we have in the current fiscal year. So, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. I appreciate it very much. As was stated, we have to have a public hearing, so at this time, I will declare the public hearing open. I don't have any speaker cards. Would anybody like to address the town council on the budget? I will declare the public hearing closed and entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to adopt Resolution Number Two Thousand Twenty Two dash zero seven one seven.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Budget's carried. Thank you, Mr. Mariotti. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Professional job in working with us, and I know I've said it a couple of times, but I appreciate the town manager, the feedback session, that's not the correct term, study session, the retreat, thank you. I was gonna get there eventually. The retreat, letting us weigh in, and saw there was little adjustment, you know, increasing our savings from that, with probably little fear going into the Great Recession, or another recession, not the Great Recession. Take that off the record. But yeah, but I appreciate that effort that you did with us very much. And item number fifteen, Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry, Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, I apologize, but you know, that, I, I just wanted to join your, your, your thoughts as, as a council in expressing support for staff, the leadership team. It was a much more collaborative process this year to bring about a recommended budget for council's consideration. Council weighed in for the, on the, on the CIP process, as well as during the budget retreat. We had a follow-up with you on items, questions that we heard, direction that we heard. We responded in, in kind, and that led to the adoption of the tentative budget, all of that culminating to, to this evening. It's a, it's a big effort. A lot of staff hours put into getting to this point. And so I just wanted to, again, recognize the leadership team and the budget team as well. And of course, Mr. Mariotti for his, his efforts and guidance. Thank you.
No, I did hear feedback from some of the department heads. The way you worked with everybody was very much appreciated. So I just wanted to thank you personally for that. Item number fifteen, Madam Clerk?
Honorable Mayor, before we move on to item fifteen, may I request a brief recess so we may reset the room?
Yes, we, that is granted. And I was gonna say, the first step, they've all passed, they're all still here. So that's the first good step on a rather long meeting. They all aren't this long, but we appreciate. Passing the first hurdle, you didn't go, so.
Much appreciated.
Thank you. So we'll be recessed for about ten minutes. Or less.
When I saw both of those things, both of the big issues on here, it's like. Help your snacks, coconut almonds. What else? I would've just been sitting here eating chocolate the whole time. No, they have carrots, so I'm sure there is. As long as you have the carrots, you have.
Otherwise, I'd be up.
That I can't.
Test. Test.
Test.
Lisa.
So they stuck a light from you, they stuck you to the floor.
That's a good trait of a doctor, though. Yeah, this is why I think it's my image, sure. I'll just hop onto my car and go.
I was about to take my jacket off to put on my legs, but then I was like...
Are the vents coming right down on you?
So yeah, so number one.
Keeping you guys on path.
On path, it's on my face.
Council members like to look at that.
Correct, correct, correct.
Get that away from me. I've already had two pieces and you know I don't have any.
Well, I knew enough, I'm like, that's no big deal, you know? Well, but that's how they listed it on there, so. I'm feeling, I'm, I'm, I usually don't feel chilly. I, I, I'm feeling chilly tonight.
It is a...
And I got a coat on.
Are you cold?
I'm good.
Are you good? Yeah, so the light off, well, ours, the light off means it's on.
Oh, really? Because, no.
No, that's, that's, that's opposite for yours.
Yeah, yep.
So all the microphones are hot, so you wouldn't have to worry about pressing the button.
Oh, okay, okay.
So green is good.
Green is good.
Green is good.
Excellent.
Up here, the red light isn't on as good, so it's backwards. Yep. What's that? Yeah, yeah. We wore him out with everything before this.
It's not near the internet. At least you look at us. Everybody had one.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's right here, too.
That's right, I'm special. That's the first answer, mayor special. Yeah. Oh, that's right, yeah, that's true. Okay, we're back at our regular meeting. And welcome to our three candidates. This time, Madam Clerk, if you'll read number fifteen. Item fifteen.
Interview and discussion of councilmember candidates, William Fouracre, Stephen Gillespie, and Teodoro Tesso, and discussion and possible action to appoint a town council member to fill a vacancy caused by the resignation of Gil Lusk to serve the remainder of the unexpired term of office.
Thank you. So I expect that we'll be going through some questions, and then probably have a, a short discussion. But the town clerk will be sort of going over how we anticipate this will, will play out about the rotation and those types of things. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Honorable mayor, vice mayor, councilmembers, candidates. Prior to the meeting, each candidate drew a candidate number at random. This number determines the order in which the candidates will answer questions. For example, candidate number one will be the first candidate asked to respond to question number one, after which the remaining candidates will be called to respond in candidate number order. Candidate number two will be asked question number two first, then the remaining candidates in candidate number order will be called upon to respond, with candidate number one answering the question last. This cycle will be repeated, and this method of questioning and response will continue until all questions are asked. Mr. Tesso is candidate number one, Mr. Gillespie is candidate number two, and Mr. Fouracre is candidate number three. Candidates will be given a maximum of three minutes to answer each initial question. Candidates, please be mindful of the timer at the head of the table. When the light turns jello, you have thirty seconds to wrap up your comments. Your time is up when the light turns red. Councilmembers, you may ask follow-up questions of each candidate at the time the candidate responds to the initial question.
Thank you. I appreciate that. First of all, thank you for your willingness to serve and, you know, be with us this evening. Not typically this long, but being prepared for it's always good. From that, we have a list of questions, as the town clerk mentioned, and you heard the briefing about the light. And Councilman Bracco will be asking the first question.
Good evening, guys. You put in your application for town council appointment, yet you chose not to run for the open seat just a short, short term earlier. Why? And do you plan to run for a council in the future?
I have previously ran for town council. This time around, there was, I was at a point in my career where it was a transition point, as a lot of people are right now during COVID. And from that transition point of working for the University of Arizona, I got the opportunity to work for my father, who has afforded me the ability to be able to do this today. And in that transition period is that time to be able to get signatures, to be on the ballot. And so it wasn't something I had on my mind at that point in time, but as soon as the opportunity presented itself, I wanted to seize it. And that's what led me here to do this.
Thanks. And the second part of that was, do you plan to run in the future?
And to answer that, I, as of right now, I do. I do enjoy the service of the community, and provided that I fulfill that service, the best of the ability that someone can, and I identify that, I definitely would.
Thank you. Any follow-up for that one, or? No, okay. Mr. Gillespie?
So, my turn now.
Do you need the question repeated, or are you okay?
No, I, I think I remember it. When, at, at the time when it was time to submit my name to be on the ballot, my wife, she's, well, she just finished her PhD in physics, and she needed a lot of, we have five children, and needed me to watch the kids so she could finally finish her dissertation. She's a superhero, I don't, I don't know how she did it. But that was what took my time and my efforts and energy. But then when this opportunity presented itself, since she had finished that, I was able to do that and submit my name. Second part, will I run again? Will I run in the future? Most likely yes. I, I thought about it for years. It's just, this was the right time.
Thank you. Mr. Fouracre?
Bill Fouracre. I had never thought about it before. I've been in Sarita and Green Valley now for, coming up on four years. I had never run for public office. I was encouraged in Indiana, where we lived, to run for mayor several times, but just never did it. I thought we had good candidates and didn't see the need. I frankly didn't see that there was a special election for a two-year spot that might have been appealing. Four years is a little long of a commitment for a rookie. I, I, that was my impression. So when Gil resigned and I saw the opportunity, I thought, you know, this would be an interesting opportunity to fulfill the balance of a four-year term, but for two years essentially. And, and really, it answers the next question, would I plan to run? And that depends on two things. Do I like the job, and does the job like me? You know, I'm a retired guy, so I've got some, some time on my hands and some moderate preparation for the job, but I don't, I just don't know whether I would run after this or not. It just depends on how this would work out.
I only ran once, and I've been here eleven years, so.
Right.
I do think that if I didn't run, then, and if, if, if I'm one of the two people that leave here dramatically disappointed tonight, my next probably move would be to apply for one of the, I don't know what you call them.
Commissioners?
Commissions, yeah. I, I think I could probably do a decent job on Parks and Rec. I might do something on planning and zoning. I've had a little background in some of that stuff, so I hope that answers your question.
Great, thank you. The second question, which will be, Mr. Gillespie, will be read by Councilman Davis.
Yeah, thank you.
See, we work on those microphone things, too, I fear, too.
It's a challenge. Appreciate all of you putting in for this position. Obviously, it takes a lot of commitment and decisions, so I appreciate that. But jumping right into the question. What one attribute do you have that you think would be of a benefit to serving on the council and support the town moving forward?
Thank you for the question. An attribute that I have, before I got into, into medicine, when I was trying to figure out what I wanted to do with my career, I, I realized I liked to help people. I liked to help solve problems. And just that, that willingness to serve and help others is an attribute, an attribute that I'll bring, though you, you all have that as well. I guess that'd be a, a strong point that I'd bring, just wanting to help and serve others. Yeah. And, and I think with the council, being on the council, I'd be able to do that, be able to help, help my fellow residents.
Thank you.
One attribute. I think if I had to pick one attribute, it would be the breadth of experience. I've had a little bit of experience in a lot of things that I think impact the council's job, but I've not had a lot at any of them. But I think the breadth of experience is probably the one attribute that I would cite.
Thank you. Mr. Tesso?
My career background has been in hospitality. And in hospitality, they teach you that the very foundation of being able to serve a guest, or a customer, whoever it may be, is the knowledge of locale. And if you understand your surroundings, you can better suit the needs of the guest. Because at that point, you can contribute, you can connect two different ideas and ground someone to that surrounding, encompass a feeling of enrichment, and that's something I know I could bring to the council. Being, having been here in Saraweta my entire life, a fifth-generation native, and that hospitality connection of knowing the locale, knowing what the history is and where the town's wanting to go, when there is conflict resolution needing to happen here, I know that I would be able to identify a way of connecting what the town is trying to do with where the concerns are coming from.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
You didn't have a follow-up for, okay, thank you. Councilmember Morales will be starting with Mr. Fouracre.
Well, we're getting ready for Saturday night. I was heartbroken that we didn't ask to get to play at the, at July 4th. Heartbroken. We're playing, we're playing on the second at the Grill, and then I'm actually the emcee for everything that's happening at Coil Creek in the morning. So we've got a parade and all kinds of stuff, that flag raising, so that's all good. If I had to put three priorities in front of the town, one of them would be economic development. One of them would be obviously public safety, because that, you know, you can't do much else if you don't have a safe community. And one would be Parks and Rec, because I think that Parks and Rec kind of goes along with, I, I guess it doesn't go along with public safety, but it certainly complements it. So if I had to assign three priorities, those would be the three. And it depends on the current status of things and how you would prioritize those. But I think moving forward, those are the things that I would look for to try to prioritize for the, for the town.
Thank you. Mr. Tesso?
My biggest concern is economic development within small business growth here in Saraweta. Having seen the town's growth, I remember when One Stop was the only place you can go and buy a gallon of milk without having to drive all the way to Walmart, before I could drive. But, that being said, it scares me seeing all the franchises coming up in the town without any kind of spirit or uniqueness to the town. At one point, it had it, and I still believe that it's there. I think it's in the events and the Parks and Rec, and I think that town is doing amazing work in that regard. But I do believe that there is a gigantic, low-hanging fruit opportunity in economic development with small businesses that are mom and pop here in the town. And be that advertising, trying to give more resources to people to start businesses, be that, like what happened with Samtech, the town having ownership of something that they can control rents and the viability of a business. I mean, how many businesses have gone up here in the Fry's community that have failed because they can't afford the rent? Not because of lack of customer base. When I was a kid, Surtino's was an amazing place to go to. That was gone, and something like that never came back. So I would like to build off that foundation and move forward to something that feels like Saraweta, something that feels like it belongs here and nowhere else, and you have to come here to check it out. So yes, I'm all for economic development.
Great.
It's, it's been interesting lately for me personally. I, I'm employed at the hospital down in Santa Cruz Valley Regional Hospital down in Green Valley, which is not going to be around very much longer. And so I've been looking for my own personal space to set up my own private practice. And thinking about what the, what the town has done with, with Samtech, with, like, building that building so others can easily just come and join and be there, I was thinking, what a blessing that is. Because I looked at locations by the hospital here in Sarita, but it's just not built yet. And I said, ah, I want something next month, but it's not available. And so the economic development that was, that was carried out there, I think that was a smart move just to make it easier for businesses to come in. I think that's important to do. And we should be for it.
Thank you. Do you do any follow-up, Councilman? Okay, thank you. Starting with Mr. Tesso, and Vice Mayor Egbert will be asking the question.
Awesome. Just let you know, if by the time we get to you, if you needed me to repeat the question because you've already heard all this language, just let me know and I'll repeat it. And there's no, I mean, we understand that there's just, you're, you're in a stressful situation. So sometimes, I was like, what question are we asked again? So, how? All right. How would you, Mr. Tesso, how would you build bridges and partnership within our community with residents, developers, and stakeholders?
That right there is absolutely one of my concerns outside of the economic concern. I do believe that there needs to be more gathering of the community to, to a meeting like this. I mean, look at all these chairs set up and how many people are filling those seats, and they're only here for this one concern. When all of this concerns members of the, I mean, residents of Saraweta, it shouldn't just be the one thing that's affecting your street, it should be the entirety of the town, because that does affect you. And the way I would attack that is through a stronger social media presence. I would, when I was in high school, I remember Coach Dorgan, I don't know if any of you are familiar with him. He was a wrestling coach of Saraweta, but very, very intelligent man. And he always said, you don't go to parents and give them the leaflets, you give the kids the leaflets, you go to the parents when it comes to things going on in the town. So he was a very strong component, uh, very strong mentor in this kind of mentality for me. I do believe that people should be reading the newspapers, but I do believe that it's the kids that talk about the stories to their parents that are too busy to read the newspapers that actually affect them. So incorporating the, the school here in more ways than we currently are. It was cool as a kid getting to come and say the Pledge of Allegiance here, but that's all I knew about it here. All I knew was it was a stressful place for that, that second there, you know, my name showing up. I'm sure it feels like that way for those kids. So how do you incorporate those kids to be more involved in a community like this? As far as stake, stakeholders and anyone else, they're like the others, the other attendees today. They have a reason to be here, they'll be here, and our outreach is in what we're doing to involve more stakeholders. So I'm not worried about that. I'm worried about the, the Saraweta residents that aren't showing up.
Thank you. But we're not recommending you close them.
Mr. Gillespie, would you like me to read the question again?
Yeah.
Okay. Mine's a long one with lots of conflict. So, how would you build bridges and partnerships within our community with residents, developers, and stakeholders?
How would I build, how would I build bridges and partnerships? I am in a lucky enough position where, at least me personally, I'm able to work with and see people in our, in our town and the community on a daily basis, where I'm able to work with them, and they frequently have questions and concerns, well, right now about the hospital, but in the future, it'll be about town council and what's going on. And so just being able to be involved there is where I build bridges, and, and being involved in the town itself, being a soccer coach to kids, being active and participating in sports in the community and plays, like, just being involved has helped build some of those bridges, get to know people. And, and I agree that the stakeholders, people want to come to the town. There's so much pull where people say, oh, you know, this, this area is growing, it's, and we want to be a part of that. And they, and businesses, they realize that, and they'll, they'll come. But being connected with the community is important. And, and just be involved.
So I, I, in my career, I apparently couldn't keep a job. I had, I was in grants and contracts for a while at, at an institutional level, a university. And I was a major gift fundraiser, and I was an economic development person for, at three different jobs in, in two different schools. And I had a guy tell me one time, and economic development is a hands-on sport. And so I think what you have to do is you have to figure out what the priorities are for what kind of economic development you want to do. And I'm not presupposing any of this isn't done, but you figure out what your priorities are, you figure out who your, who your likely targets are, if they're not coming to you, if you're reaching out to do this kind of stuff, you're trying to instigate some action. And you have to figure out who's going to go visit with, who's going to talk to them, who's going, same thing with fundraising. It's a body contact sport. You go out and meet with fundraisers, whether they're grants and contracts people or whether they're individual folks that want to make an impact. So I think you have to figure out what your priorities are, set your, your goals and your mission, and then you have to go out and start taking that action, and you got to make that step out. And lots of times, it's, it's one-on-one contact to get that stuff going.
Thank you. Do you have a follow-up? Thanks. I was, I asked the town clerk to keep me on track, but I haven't got lost yet, so I know we're starting with you. I appreciate that. What are the top two things that you would like to accomplish if selected to fill the council vacancy?
I think that the town has done a really good job. In the nine years I've been here, I've been very impressed. I think there's a, a lot to be said for maintenance, you know, keep the good things going. At our last meeting we had where Rhodes came in and said, "Hey, we're repaving all the roads over the next five years." I said, "Yeah, it's so much easier just to keep up on things." I've, I've been impressed with, with our police and with safety. Parks and Rec always does a great job with the Fiesta Sarita, with, with Stars and Stripes coming up, like, so, you know, maintenance is never, it's never sexy, you know, but, uh, but we need to keep that going. Now, for the flip side, you know, something new and exciting, and I know that the Parks Department is working on gathering information from the residents, figuring out what's, what's needed. I think if, well, if, if the city, or sorry, if the town and the residents within it want to have a sports complex or something where everyone can gather and participate, especially when it's 105 outside, I, I am all for that, and I think that would be great, and I would love to see that go forward if, if, if the members of the community want that.
Great. And part of that, I'll just do a quick follow-up, and I know part of that, when we heard the survey, it's how do we pay for it? Because one of the, the top two things were, "I don't want a property tax," and, now, this is before messaging, "But I don't want a property tax, and I don't want a half-son sales tax." So, if you, if this is something, you know, and I'm excited about it too, but if, if something we do, how would you message it, and how would you think we could possibly fund it?
Right, because it's, it's hard to, hard to raise taxes for it. Good question. You know, and I think part of it would have to be raised through, through revenue, through a bond or something like that, that would have to be voted through where the people who are really striving to have it would have to go out and put that message out. You know, could there be avenues where the fees to rent the facility or sponsorship, things like that? Is that possible? Yeah, I'd expect the staff to have a lot better ideas than I do, and so, I turn to them for their expertise to say, "What do you guys think?" Because I'm not, well, I'm not afraid to say, "I don't know." And, and hopefully someone there knows and can help me find those right answers.
Great, thank you. Do you want to repeat that top two things?
Yeah, that's a really good question, and I wish I was third on this one. I think.
I'm in a good spot.
I think one of the really important things going forward is the annexation of the property into Sarita that's on the northwest, I'm sorry, northeast quadrant. And part of that's the, the new, I don't know what you'd call it, zoo for any.
I'm calling the Sarita Safari.
There you go, the safari. But there's a whole lot of other attributes there and future development that could happen, and I think that's an important thing to kind of keep some pressure on. The other thing, and this is probably just me, I worked with several aerospace companies in Indiana and put together a curriculum for a shared program in computer integrated manufacturing. And we developed a curriculum, we had two cohorts, a kid went to school, kid, a young person went to school in half a day, and they worked in the company half-day. And the company paid them for their half-days' worth of work and paid part of their tuition, they paid part of their tuition, we had a non-compete so they couldn't go out right after graduation and go work for another company. It, it occurs to me, and we had, had five little aerospace manufacturers in a fifty, twenty-five mile radius that were all in on this. It occurs to me, something like that could happen here. With our close connection or geographically close connection with the aerospace industry that's on the south side of Tucson, it seems to me that some cooperation with either community college or some other, even something that we would create ourselves to create a curriculum for, whatever you want to call it, agile manufacturing, computerized manufacturing, but then the, the current state of manufacturing, which is not like it was when I learned years ago. I think that would be a good thing, I think it's, it diversifies the commercial base in Sarita or could, and it creates lots of opportunities in education and in employment. So, I think those would be the two things that I would champion.
Okay, thank you, great.
Yeah.
Mr. Tessa.
Hate to be hammering the same things here, but economic development, town identity would be my main focus is here. And with that town identity, I think Samtech is an excellent starting point for that. And to kind of piggyback off of what Mr. Foraker was saying here, definitely making sure that there's jobs available for the students that are currently in Salawita. When I went to go study to be a sommelier, I mean, obviously, I'm not asking for a vineyard here, but I had to obviously leave Salawita, I had to leave Tucson, I had to leave to New York. Okay, cool. I wasn't the only one that had to leave to go figure something out. And it wasn't that, it wasn't that we were trying to chase down something so unique, I know, I kind of found that niche right there, but for all my friends that did leave, they weren't trying to find some crazy out-there job that did require going to New York, but there wasn't very much here, right? And so, with Samtech, there's an excellent opportunity to expand whatever's going on right now with Samtech and Salawita, the high schools here, expand on that. But, as economic development expands, that means opportunities like that expand as well. And with that, you do create a town identity. So, they kind of go hand-in-hand. I'm not saying this is going to be done in a two-year span, a four-year span, a ten-year span, but the foundations start now, especially when there's so much traction that has been laid out from all of you and the community right now. There's so much buy-in from the community right now. It's definitely, the iron's hot, you know, time to strike and lay that foundation down.
Great, thank you. And this will be the last question, kind of a wrap-up. And we're starting with Mr. Foraker. I know you asked for me to be third, but now you get to end with number one.
So far, I've hit it just right. The ones I wanted to be first on, I was, and so, I'm living good right now.
Why are you the best applicant? And is there any additional information you'd like to share with us as a council, as a wrap-up?
Yeah, I don't have any idea that I'm the best applicant. I think you guys have such an easy job here because I think you get three pretty good candidates. You got a diverse mixture here, so you can pick somebody that you think will complement the experience and the expertise you already have. So, I, I have no, in fact, I may be the least qualified because I've got the least amount of time in town, I have the least attachment to the community, so to speak, or least knowledge. So, you know, I have no delusion that I'm the best candidate here. What was the second part of the question?
Well, just, and, and do you have a, like, closing comments or a little wrap-up or?
I, I think it goes back to what my number-one attribute is. I think it's, if I have a positive energy or a positive impact that I can make onto board, I think it's the breadth of experience. I ran in a manufacturing incubator, I, I've, I've done economic development work, and I, so I've done several of the things that you have to do. I've done budget development, I've worked with, with state and, and county governments, I've worked with federal agencies with NIH and NSF and the Department of Education and various jobs. So, I think I can bring a, a pretty wide background, but then, you know, they say a generalist is a person who knows less and less about more and more until they know nothing about everything. So, but I think that's, that's the attribute that I bring. The challenges I have are learning about the community, and learning about the projects that you have going on now, learning, so there's, there's a pretty good learning curve ahead of me. So, that these gentlemen don't necessarily have because they've been in the community and they know more about it, they have a better sense of its identity. So, I think that's all I can tell you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Mr. Tessa, why are you the best applicant? And any closing comments, additional information you'd like to share with the council?
If there's any attribute of mine that would make me the most qualified or best candidate, I mean, it's, I've experienced it. It's not so much that I am a long lineage here because 1942 Salawita is completely different than 2022 Salawita. It's, I've experienced it the most recently, from childhood to now. I know the pitfalls that I experienced, I know that of my friends, I know of my cousins, I know of other, plenty of people, of where they really enjoy certain aspects and other aspects they see as gaping opportunities. That's what I could bring to the council. As far as my own executive skills and being able to fulfill that, it's that in hospitality, that's all you do. You look for opportunities to make the hotel better, you look for opportunities to make an experience better. They have this idea in Marriott, it was called the widely important goal, they call it the WIGS. If you're not following the WIGS, it's whirlwind. Every day, you're doing something, but nothing gets done. It's because you don't have that overarching, "This is what we're trying to accomplish here." And then, everything else you do feeds to that. So, what time you wake up in the day, what the very first thing you do when you show up at your desk, what kind of calls are you taking? All those things feed the widely important goal. And it's with that mindset that I would go into the council. It's with that fortitude of trying to accomplish a task of creating or enhancing Salawita. That's what I could bring to the council.
Thank you, appreciate that. Why are you the best applicant? And any closing things you'd like to share with us?
Well, I agree with Bill. I think he said you have an easy choice, I think it'll be a hard choice because.
I'm with you. I don't swear, but I'm like, damn.
Well, that's the best kind of thing, position to be in.
Yes.
So, no, I, I am willing to serve and to learn, and if you choose me, look forward to doing so, I think it'll be a good opportunity. And, yeah, I, I didn't realize like how nervous I'd be here, you know? Before I started, I kind of went through this little saying, you know, "When you're nervous, remember to speak loudly so everyone can hear you, speak clearly so everyone can understand you, and speak briefly so everyone will like you." So, I just wanted to say, "Thank you."
Bill reminds me of that third part all the time, but I'm a work in progress on that. Well, again, thank you for being here, it's most appreciative. You're all, you're obviously all, you know, great candidates, and I felt that when we were doing the selection. I wasn't looking forward to tonight because of your comment on there. But, at this time, well, I'll, does anybody have any, this is not my script, but does anybody have any follow-up question? Or we'll go to Mr. Hockley to try to.
I just want to thank you for your brief comments. It's a late night, we appreciate your brevity.
I wouldn't pick me because then you'd have two Bills on the council, and that would be just annoying.
I'm not going to comment on Bill. At this point, Mr. Hockley, I think you're going to give us a little quick briefing on the nomination process that we will be moving forward with at this point.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yes, this is, you and I discussed this earlier. The process is a little different than normal. Normally, someone would make a motion that so-and-so will be appointed to fill the vacancy. But, what we've decided, what the mayor decided to do is follow the process we use when the mayor and the vice mayor are selected every two years. So, this is the process. The clerk will ask each council member if they wish to nominate up to one candidate. After all the council members have had an opportunity to nominate a candidate, that will be the slate of candidates. So, if two of them nominate somebody and nobody, and everybody else passes, then the slate of candidates will be two people. Then, the clerk will do a roll-call vote, person by person, and they will name the person that they think should get the job. Then, because your lawyer believes that the council should vote on things, which is a group activity, then after that nomination, after that process where you each say who, which of the slate of candidates you would like to vote for, then someone, you pretty much know where everybody stands, right? Then someone will make a motion, any motion they want, but obviously, if they make a motion for somebody that only got one person approving it, that motion probably will fail. But then, there should be a motion and a second and a vote to appoint so-and-so to serve the remainder of Mr. Lusk's term of office. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask for clarification?
Absolutely.
So, I just want to make sure I understand, when we do the first step, if one of the candidate, if the candidate we want to nominate is already named, we can just pass because it's already been named?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, that's correct.
And the second time, when asked, I will save my nomination name that was listed on, from the first step?
Correct. Step one, people name somebody if they would like that person on the slate of candidates. Step two, name, each candidate, each council member will say which of the candidates they favor. Step three is a formal vote like you would normally do.
That's right. Okay. Is there, did anybody else want any clarification? And we can get clarification as we go as well if we, we get tied up. Madam Town Clerk.
Councilmember Barco, your nominee, please.
I thought this would be easier.
Yeah.
Dr. Gillespie.
Vice Mayor Egbert, your nominee, please.
I pass.
Councilmember Morales, your nominee, please.
Ted Tessa.
Mayor Murphy, your nominee, please.
I pass.
Councilmember Davis, your nominee, please. Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, your slate is Mr. Gillespie and Mr. Tessa. Vice Mayor Egbert.
Gillespie.
Councilmember Morales.
Tessa.
Councilmember Davis.
Tessa.
Councilmember Barco.
Gillespie.
Mayor Murphy.
Dr. Gillespie.
And at this point, and I will entertain a motion for the selection to fill Councilmember Lusk's position.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I nominate Dr. Gillespie to fill the remaining term of Gil Lusk's council member position. Did I say it right? Did I catch everything?
Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Vice Mayor, you, you, you meant, you mean I move that we appoint?
A point, thank you.
Dr. Gillespie, thank you.
A point, thank you.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
And sincere thanks to all three of you.
Thank you, all you.
Congratulations.
And I hope to see commission selections or submittals for the two on the end. Here. Madam Clerk, item number sixteen.
Discussion and possible action to appoint a town council member to fill the vacancy caused by the resignation of Melissa Hicks, who will serve until the council meeting at which the canvas of the 2022 general election is approved, or if all council members are elected at the 2022 primary election, then the first council meeting following the date of the 2022 general election.
Thank you. So, this would, there was one, for the two-year seat, there was one candidate, Diane, and we were waiting because the timeframe to submit as a writing candidate was last Thursday at five o'clock, and nobody submitted. So, unless, you know, I'm expecting she'll vote for herself, so I would expect, you know, you need one vote to win the election. So, the thought was to fill the appointment until the canvassing of the election, which would be in November. So, we're looking for a motion to appoint.
So we're looking for a motion to appoint Ms. Priolo to fill the vacancy until the, the election's canvassed in November. So she would fill as an appointee until the election has been canvassed.
So you're looking just for a bridge appointment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and I was, I was holding off because there was a possibility we could have a writing candidate and would be probably not that likely, but since she literally, again, she gets one vote, she's elected, that as a bridge candidate, I thought that would be appropriate.
So you want a motion to.
Motion to appoint.
Appoint Diane Priolo to the council pending the final tally of the election.
Yes.
Sounds good.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second that.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So is, is the town clerk going to be doing the swearing-in? Okay. I will have Dr. Gillespie and Diane, we're gonna.
One, one, one quick.
Yes.
How come I couldn't come in and then get a month and a half off?
We'll grant it to you now.
Because your name is Bill. And then what I'll do is, you have the paperwork too, like we usually do. So we'll do the swearing-in really quickly and then I wanted to give each one of you, you know, a minute, you know, just to say something, if you choose to, you don't have to. And then stick around because there's some formal paperwork that we have to sign for that appointment. So at this time, would you like to?
Honorable Mayor?
Yes.
Moving on to administration of the oath of office to the newly-appointed town council members.
That's what I said.
Just for the record.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate always keeping me out of trouble, especially as the hour gets late. So typically, well, probably, I, I think in front of the sign would be appropriate. So Diane and Dr. Gillespie, if you could stand over there, she'll administer the oath. And then since you'll be near the podium, you can say a couple of words if you'd like and if you've said enough already, that's fine too.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. When I say state your name, please state your individual names. I state your name.
I, Diane Priolo.
Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona. And the ordinances, resolutions and rules. Of the town of Sarita. And that I will bear true faith. And allegiance to the same. And defend them against. All enemies. Foreign and domestic. And that I will faithfully. And impartially. Discharge the duties of councilmember. Of the town of Sarita, Arizona. According to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations.
So ladies first, Diane, if you just want to step to the podium where Lisa is, if you want to say anything, you don't have to, I just wanted to give you the opportunity because we'll be adjourned in the meeting after this.
Very emotional to stand here and to stand to defend the Constitution of the United States. I cherish our freedoms. So I want to thank Almighty God for calling me to run for this office. And I want to thank Him for blessing me that I ran unpoised. I want to invite the Holy Spirit to walk every step of the two years facing me to guide my steps, to inform me. And I want to thank every person that helped me in my campaign. I want to bless them in God's blessings for stepping to the podium and helping me.
Yes, I see that.
And Joey Zimmerman. Thank you. I want to bless the town of Sarita. I bless the town of Sarita with God's love, His light, His peace, His joy, health and prosperity. And I promise that I will not vote for anything unless it's good in the eyes of God. He will inform my moral compass. And I want to say, God bless America, God bless Sarita, and may all of us in leadership positions be guided by the Holy Spirit and have wise and discerning hearts as we are entrusted with the public good.
Thank you.
All glory to God.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Well, she has my vote. Just wanted to say thanks, thanks for staying with us, thank you for this opportunity.
Can you turn the mic on? I don't think it's on.
Let me start over.
There you go.
She has my, no. I want to say thanks to everybody. Thank you to the other applicants and you guys could not have gone wrong with anyone that you picked, but thank you for this opportunity to serve, I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, appreciate it. So having no more further business for the public, we're adjourned, but the two of you, please see our town clerk over here because there's some paperwork you have to sign. Thank you.